And the time is now 9:01 a.m., Mr. President, and you may call the meeting to order.
Good morning, colleagues, staff, members of the public. It is just after 9:00 a.m. on December 2nd, 2025, and we're calling this regular meeting of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors to order. It starts with having the board provide information on how the clerk of the board provide information on how the public can participate in this meeting.
Members of the public, the instructions to participate in today's meeting can be found on the published agenda. These instructions provide information on how to submit written comments and also how to participate via Zoom. Live interpretation of this entire meeting will be provided in Spanish. To access live interpretation services, please click the Interpretation Globe icon and select the Spanish language on your laptop or computer. If you're using a smartphone or tablet, please locate the three-dot menu, select Interpretation, then select the Spanish language, and finally click Done. At this time, I will ask our interpreter, Victor Hernandez, to provide these instructions in Spanish.
Thank you, Sheri. Good morning, President Canepa, and honorable supervisors, and Mr. Callagie, Mr. Niblin, Mr. Mates, all county staff, members of the public, Victor Hernandez, Spanish interpreters. Les queremos dejar saber, buenos dias, que las instrucciones para participar en lo que es la reunión de hoy se pueden encontrar en lo que es en el orden del día que ya ha sido publicado. Estas instrucciones dan información de cómo presentar comentarios, tanto por escrito y por Zoom. También les queremos dejar saber que se les proporcionará interpretación en vivo de toda esta reunión en español. Y para poder acceder, lo que son los servicios de interpretación en vivo por Zoom, ya sea con una computadora o una portátil, usted tendrá que hacer clic en lo que es un icono del globo terráqueo, es decir, un mundo que aparecerá en el fondo de su pantalla, y después seleccione el idioma que sería el español. Si usted está usando un teléfono inteligente, una tableta, busque lo que es el menú de tres puntos, seleccione Interpretación, luego seleccione el idioma en español, y por último, haga clic en Done o Listo. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for those instructions. We'll now have the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll now move to honoring the life of and board member remarks. Do any supervisors have comments or things to share for honoring the life of?
Mr. President, may I take the roll call first?
Yep. If you can, that'd be great.
You're awesome. Supervisor Spear?
Thank you.
Supervisor Corzo?
Here.
Supervisor Mueller?
Here.
Supervisor Gautier?
Here.
And President Canepa?
Here.
All present. Thank you.
Great. Any comments from the board? Supervisor Spear?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's with a heavy heart that I ask that we remember the life of someone who lived it so incredibly well. Karen Franconi died October 29th after a long and very stoic battle with cancer. She began her career with the Service League 35 years ago as a Hope House Substance Use Disorder counselor. She worked her way up to become the Hope House Director and then the Service League Director, and finally served as the Executive Director for the last 13 years. She was passionate about working in the field of reentry and recovery, and loved giving second chances to those who had been incarcerated and were struggling with addiction. She felt honored to be part of their new lives, helping them reunite with their families, helping them stay out of jail, and remain clean and sober and regain their health. She believed that change is a mind-body-and-spirit experience, and was often heard saying, "Don't quit before the miracle." She indeed was the miracle for San Mateo County and for all those she helped. In another matter, Mr. President, I'd like for us to explore live interpretation in Mandarin. Our county population is very large in terms of the Asian-American population, and I think we should be recognizing the need to provide that service to them as well.
Great. You know, through staff, that seems like a pretty solid request. I have no issue with it. Is staff okay with it?
Yeah, we will look into that and endeavor to accomplish that.
All right. Thank you very much. Supervisor Gautier?
Yes, thank you. Today, I'd like to acknowledge one of our centenarians. In keeping with our tradition of honoring the centenarians of San Mateo County, I want to wish a heartfelt 100th birthday to Petty Officer Second Class Raul Yutado. Mr. Yutado turned 100 last week on Thanksgiving Day. He is a World War II vet whose life tells a story of courage, sacrifice, and quiet strength. At just 17, moved by a simple moment during a school trip where he watched a sailor jump off a ship, he set his heart on serving his country with the United States Navy. He went on to fly with the Black Cats, carrying out missions across the Pacific that required skill, bravery, and deep resolve. He returned home, raised a family, and although he faced many losses, he continued to serve his community in San Carlos. His kindness, endurance, and pride in his service continue to inspire those around him. Mr. Yutado, thank you for your service, your resilience, and the light you bring to our community. And please, if you know of any, if you know any centenarians in San Mateo County, we should honor, please reach out to me via my website. And also, Mr. President, I'd like to acknowledge that yesterday was World AIDS Day. I want to acknowledge yesterday, December 1st, is World AIDS Day. As of 2023, there are 1,687 people diagnosed with HIV or AIDS living in San Mateo County, a vast majority of which identify as male and are people of color. Thanks to the great strides in medicine, those folks are living longer lives. But we're not through the woods on this epidemic that took millions of lives in the 80s and 90s. Our federal government declared that they would no longer recognize World AIDS Day. That is a disservice to those living with AIDS. It is also important that we, as a county, commit to supporting all those living with HIV and AIDS and allocating resources towards prevention. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any additional comments? Seeing none, we'll now move to public comment. This is the portion of the agenda that is set aside for members of the public to come on and comment on matters that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors, but that are not on the agenda for today's meeting, for matters that are listed on the consent agenda, and for matters that are set for closed session. Public comment will be limited today to one minute. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. We did receive written comments, which were provided to the board and put on the public website. We'll start with speakers from chambers, and I do have one speaker slip for Edgar Ryan Silva.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Edgar Ryan Silva, and I'm a resident of North Central San Mateo. Right now, the average two-bedroom rent in our county is over $4,000 a month, which requires a household income of about $132,000 a year to afford. Meanwhile, a minimum wage worker earns about $34,000 a year. This strain is felt in equity-priority communities like mine, where extremely low-income renters spend more than half their income on housing, leaving almost nothing for basic necessities. The question here is how do we balance the needs of our economy with the needs of our most impacted communities? Because in reality, these concerns are one and the same. A county cannot function when the people who staff its hospitals, schools, restaurants, and public services can't afford to live where they work. A strong economy requires stability for the workers to keep it running. May future funding and policy decisions strive to prioritize these neighborhoods carrying the heaviest housing burden. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Seeing no further speaker slips from chambers, we'll now go to comments from Zoom. I do see three hands raised, and we will go to Michelle Stevens, and then I'll ask for a final call for raised hands. Michelle, please unmute and begin.
Hello, my name is Michelle Stevens, and I come to this meeting by the grace of Jesus, and I ask that every board member, please, remember your oath in all matters, today, yesterday, and tomorrow. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. At this time, we'll make a final call. Is that okay, Mr. President?
Yes.
Okay. Please raise your hand at this time if you'd like to speak for public comment, and that'll be a final call. Final call has been made, and the last three speakers, Sabrina, Martin Fox, and Bruce. Sabrina, please unmute and begin.
My name is Sabrina. I come to you as one of the people, Suri Juris, who hold all political power, declared in the California Constitution, Article 2, Section 1, and the U.S. Constitution's Amendment 9 and 10, Article 3 and Section 1 of the California Constitution, confirms that the Constitution is the supreme law of land. Like a contractor that was contracted to remove a kitchen sink and replace the tile and agree to terms, you've gone outside the contract, the express grant of authority, and have torn down supporting walls while hiring a subcontractor to paint only one wall with rainbow colors while damaging the others. You allow squatters to come in. You continue to do work outside the contracted grant of authority, tearing away the foundation and the framework of structure. The board has continued their malice administration further into malfeasance by selecting and installing a sheriff that was not duly elected by the people, denying the rights of the people. As in contract law, the people had given you notice and allowed you the grace to make amends, repent, and repair all the damages, and adhere to the agreed-upon contract. However, you have knowingly violated the inherent constitutional rights of the people.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll go to Martin Fox. Please unmute and begin.
Good morning, President Canepa, my fellow veteran county attorney, Mr. Niblin, supervisors Corso, Mueller, Gautier, and county executive, Mr. Callagie. Thank all of you for your service to the county. Please make the repeal of the Laramie-Peter Short Act the very top county state legislative priority and defunding of disability rights California and the law foundation of Silicon Valley, who defend the immoral Laramie-Peter Short Act, the top county federal legislative priority. The San Jose Mercury News front page article entitled Care Court Help Is Limited: Few Referrals Have Entered Program reflect that Newsom's Care Court is not meeting expectations just a few weeks ago. San Mateo County's residents needed orthotics and inspired compassionate mental health treatment system. California's Laramie-Peter Short Act of 1967 is one of the 10 worst involuntary mental health treatment laws in the 50 states. Please make the immediate reintroduction and passage of the Laramie-Peter Short Act's repeal the top county state legislative priority and defunding disability California and the law foundation of Silicon Valley, the very top county federal legislative priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker, Bruce, please unmute and begin.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Bruce Johnson. I come Suri Juris, one of the people. And who holds all political power is declared in the California Constitution, Article 2, Section 1, and the U.S. Constitution Amendments 9, 19, and actually, Section 10, Article 10, Section 9, Article 10, Section 10. Each member of the board swore an oath. You entered your respective offices as required by Article 20, Section 3 of the California Constitution, that you would freely bear true faith and allegiance to the constitutions of the United States and the State of California. You are bound by these oaths as written in Article 6 of the United States Constitution. And Article 3, Section 1 of the California Constitution affirms that the United States Constitution is supreme law of land.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes public comment, Mr. President.
Great. I want to say thank you to all those who shared their comments. I will now take action to set the agenda and approve the consent agenda. At the request of the Department of Public Works, we will pull item number 26 from the agenda in its entirety for our future meeting. Are there any other requests from members? With that, can I get a motion to set the agenda to approve the consent agenda?
So, a second.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller? Supervisor Gautier?
Yes.
President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes, removing item 26.
Thank you very much. We'll begin the agenda with presentations and awards. There's one presentation, which is Item 1, a poetry reading by San Mateo County poet laureate, Antonio López. This item is sponsored by Supervisor Corzo.
Good morning, everyone. Can we believe that it's December already? I can't. Today, we will be hearing from our Arts Commission, I'm sorry, our poet laureate, Antonio López, for our final quarterly poetry reading of 2023. And as we know, Antonio is not only an award-winning poet and educator, but also a champion for using the arts to uplift community voices and spark important conversations. His work reflects the heart, diversity, and resilience of our county. Please join me in welcoming San Mateo County poet laureate, Antonio López, reading his original poem.
Good morning, members of the board, President Canepa. It's good to see you all again. What a year, right? I hope you all had a wonderful holiday last weekend, and I hope that the good work in this poetry continues to uplift you, continues to inspire you, continues to remind you that words matter, language matters, and that part of the work of governance is also seeing people and listening to them. And so much of the work that I strive to do, and I'm sure you all, is to use the languages of the community to be a mirror and reflect the struggles, the triumph, the resilience. And so, this poem that I'm going to read to you today is from my first collection, Cantification. And the only thing that you should know about this poem is that it's written in four lines or less. So it tries to create a sense of constraint, and it's titled "Dr. Adaka," which imagines a dialogue between a mother and a daughter. And as you can hear from the title, part of the struggle is that the daughter is the recipient, as you know, of the Dreamers Act, which was an executive order that was signed by President Obama and which lamentably, regrettably, remains challenged under this administration. Dr. Adaka. Dr. Adaka. Hija, solo sepa que I love you very much. Daré todo, cada humectampico inca cola jugo de mi ser, para que quedes here, here, here. Por en mis brazos hay ninguna ley. Mom, I've had to live only speaking, the only four-letter or less space Daca gave me, but not anymore. Mommy, I was pre-diabetic. Now I am pre-med. Todo por y para ti. This week, we will study the heart. Eight hundred thousand Daca-mented hearts equals three million chamber valves, all choked by two chambers of Congress. Our hearts pump peso, dólar, y European wages. Apa fue un peón de este país. Como lo extraño. Amá, the heart weighs 11 ounces, ounces, ounces. Once upon a PBS show, I had a dreamer of one Daca to open una clínica en cada barrio, that tú y yo would start our dietas otra vez, the fifth time this week, and you'd hold in your palm dos platos de pupusas. I have seis meses to get it renewed, to fit in this dress for Vanes Boda that I may not even get to get to, to pick the best strawberries in the farmer's market and dip them in, like you say, her cheese chocolate. Like cuando mirabas la cocina en todo un desmadre, and I vowed to never wash these hands, and you lifted that chancla-throwing mano until tus besos limpiaron mis dedillos. And we were gemelas of syrup lips concocting a new meh. How we would sing the new Selena song until Papi came home, biddy, biddy, bam, bam. Thank you.
Thank you. As the daughter of immigrant parents as well, this poem resonates with me in so many ways. And I had time recently to think about my mom's and my dad's experiences coming to this country and everything that they had to overcome. And, you know, it's common, I would say, for the children of immigrants to forget that many times their parents maybe got to have an elementary school education and then migrated to this country and built a life that we then get to benefit from. And I think this poem really made that clear in a beautiful way. So I want to thank you for this beautiful poem. It's very timely, I would say. And I want to see if my colleagues here would like to add anything, but thank you.
Thank you.
It was beautiful.
I just want to thank the Arts Commission and to our poet laureate for just bringing art to us, and I really enjoyed your poem today. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. It was a beautiful year. I really appreciate your work this year.
I also just want to add, before I'm going off to the next item, that our office, and regrettably, we didn't have a presentation this time, but we've been very prolific, the Arts Commission. We've done quite a few events, upwards of 50 at least, since I've been appointed, and everything from the Human Services Agency, reading to poetry, to, we're poised to speak at the prisons and jails in January. We're figuring out the details with Sheriff's Office to make sure that we can go teach poems at the Maple Street Correctional Center. And so I just want you to know that, you know, obviously, I'm here once every quarter, but we're very active, and I feel very excited and spirited, obviously, given the climate. Nevertheless, very honored and privileged to do this work, and I just want you to know that this appointment is really touching people's hearts. It's really inspiring people. It's, again, I will definitely get a more precise and erudite presentation, because I really want the public as well to know that we're not just sort of vanishing and coming back, but we really are doing a lot of great work here in the county. So thank you for the investment. Thank you for you all's belief in the arts, particularly as the mighty team at the Arts Commission will tell you, like many aspects and activities, it's being challenged by the federal government in terms of investment. A lot of disinvestment is occurring. So this is a time when a lot of writers and artists are really oppressed to get funding. So it's great to know that in San Mateo County, the arts has a home, that it's important to dream. It's important to really paint the narrative of what is happening. And for people who will come from, as Supervisor Corso eloquently said, who are the children of immigrants or who have stories to tell, we all have a story to share, and that's what brings us closer. That's what makes us more human. That's what makes us more united. So again, thank you for your support, and I look forward to reading some more poetry to you all in the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Antonio.
Great. Antonio, I just really want to thank you. I mean, I think what you've done as poet laureate has been amazing. I think the people, and I want to thank our Executive Director, our CEO of the Arts Commission, and the Arts Commission in particular. I mean, we've just seen so much positive change and transformation. And I think your words, you know, you said chancla and pupusas, eh? Right? So to me, that was very interesting. But the way that you're able to weave your words and your ideas, we know throughout history that it's the arts and through word, or if it's visual, that really move people. But I'm especially, especially proud of you. I think you've just done an amazing job. You're an incredible person. I consider you a dear, dear friend. And the work that you've done this year, you've left an indelible mark, my friend. You should be very proud of yourself.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's very kind.
So, is there any more comments? No. All right. Thank you again, and thank you to our CEO of the arts for being here with us today. This item does not require any action. We'll move on to note the matter set forth at a specified time.
And perhaps a public comment?
A public comment. And I'm sure they're all in line waiting. Go ahead.
Thank you. I don't have any speaker cards from chambers, so we'll take comments on Zoom now for the quarterly poetry reading, item number one. We have one hand raised from Sabrina. Please unmute Sabrina and begin.
You know, before we move forward with public comments, let's make sure that we stay for the speakers on the item and subject matter before us. So we'll take the first speaker. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Yes, I do want to comment on that. I did remind you before in the past that it is in the California Constitution that you are supposed to uphold its Article 3, Section 6 in the California Constitution to promote the English language. And I don't see how you funding these arts councils that don't support and promote.
Can you speak to the item? Ma'am, can you speak to the item?
The one where you were just discussing with this arts council?
The poetry, correct.
Right. And that is part of not promoting the English language. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. That brings us to item two on our agenda. It's the presentation of our service awards. This item is set for 3:00 p.m. at the Regional Operations Center. We look forward to honoring our county employees later this afternoon. Item three, it's now time to move to our regular agenda. There are seven items. We'll start with item three, which is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Insight Public Sector Inc. to provide cloud hosting services for an initial term, January 1st, 2026, through December 31st, 2028, with two one-year options to extend the term. With that, we have, thank you for joining us from the Controller's Office. Thank you.
Good morning, President Canepa, members of the board, Mr. Callagie, Mr. Niblin, Mr. Mates. I'm Kristy Silva. I am the Assistant Controller here on behalf of the Controller Juan Regozza. Thank you for this opportunity to present the resolution authorizing an agreement with Insight Public Sector Inc. to provide IBM iSeries cloud hosting services for our property tax system. The Controller's Office Property Tax Division relies on the property tax software to carry out the statutory duties of the property tax administration and to ensure that property tax payable are accurately calculated in a timely manner and that property tax collected are accurately distributed to the taxing agencies, including the county. Our property tax system is custom-developed to better support the unique, complex requirements of the property tax calculations and distributions. While the system is developed and maintained in-house, the IBM iSeries servers it sits on are hosted externally. The Insight contract we present to you today is for this vendor to continue those IBM server hosting services. We conducted a competitive procurement, RFP, to locate a qualified vendor to provide IBM server hosting and upgrades. Four proposals were received. The Controller's team reviewed the proposals for cloud hosting services and determined that Insight should be selected to provide these services. Insight's organizational capacity, experience and qualifications, quality and hosting services, support and implementation approach, and fee proposal most closely met the county's requirement. In conclusion, we are requesting approval authorizing an agreement with Insight Public Sector Inc. Thank you. I'm happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you. Before we take any questions, can we take public comment? Do we have any public comment?
Sure, Mr. President. I don't have any speaker cards in chambers, so we'll take public comment at this time for item number three from the Controller's Office. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Let me bring it back to the board. Are there any questions on this item? Seeing none, with that, can I get a motion?
I move to adopt this item.
Is there a second? All right. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller? Supervisor Gautier?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. That brings us to item four, and we'll now have item four, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing the chief's elections officer to execute agreements for the provision of election-related materials and services from a list of approved vendors. With that, Mr. Callagie?
I believe Mr. Rosari was going to present on this. I asked this to come before the board for transparency purposes. It's a significant amount of money that is taxpayer money that is spent to conduct elections in this county, and I am sure that it is well-spent, and Mr. Rosari is here now. I'm sure that it's well-spent, but I wanted to, again, in all transparency, make sure the board understands how it's spent and how these companies are chosen. Though the code does not require elections to go through the purchasing process here in the county, I do think that, and I hope that Mr. Rosari will elaborate, how they go about ensuring that the public gets the best benefit of the bargain, because we do continually use the same vendors for elections. And I just want to make sure that it's not out of convenience and vendors for elections. And I just want to make sure that it's not out of convenience, and it is, in fact, out of the spirit of the best value. And I'm sure Mr. Rosari can speak to that.
All right, Mr. Rosari.
Morning, Mr. President, members of the board. Thank you, Mr. Callagie. If I may quickly go through our presentation and answer any questions that you might have. Next page. The Master Services Agreement we have before you encompasses eight vendors, essential to elections administration. The term is from one to five years with amendments in subsequent years. Funding is for $15,656,000. Provides both legal, fiscal, and administrative oversight while preserving operational flexibility for the department. Ensures secure, accurate, and timely administration of elections and offers the best procurement practices followed in the selection of these vendors, as Mr. Callagie spoke to. If I may go to the next page. Elections Code, Section 14-100. It's important to put the context of the procurement process for the Chief Elections Officer and the Elections Division in San Mateo County. First of all, it's important to understand that the elections system and elections, per se, are governed by the state of California and also, of course, the Elections Code and the California Constitution. The state is the primary source of authority in this area. Through regulations, Elections Code, Section 14-100, the county elections official in providing the materials required to this division shall not be required to utilize the services of the county processing agent. That's an important aspect to be aware of, in that what we are doing is following state law in the process of selection of vendors. Nonetheless, Mr. Church has established a process of open and transparent transparency in the selection of vendors through the Master Services Agreement. So we can come before you today, review them, answer any questions that you might have, and also to facilitate the process, because we do have a lot of vendors that we have to administer their services during an election. If I may go to the next section. In addition, there is San Mateo County Ordinance 2.83100, which governs election supplies. It shall be the duty of the county clerk to purchase all election supplies. Such supplies shall be purchased by the county clerk in the manner provided by the Elections Code. And the purchasing agent of the county, I will add, shall have no duty or authority relating thereto. If I may go to the next page. Before I enter into covering all of the vendors that we have, it's important to realize that elections, by their very nature, are timely. They are time constraints, both statutorily, legally, and practically. We hire over 1,000 employees for a particular election. We work with numerous vendors to get hundreds of thousands of ballots processed and mailed to you. We have literally millions of pages of documents that have to be printed. And all have to be done in a manner that is statutorily mandated and, more importantly, timely. One of the issues with elections is that we never know what's going to happen. There is no such thing as a perfect election, although that's what we strive to do. And the code allows us to be quick and nimble on our feet to adjust to any emergencies and to any issues that may be brought before us throughout an election or during the elections process. Timeliness is critical, and the adherence to statutory and constitutional law governing elections is important. We have to keep in mind that, under the California Constitution, the United States Constitution, the states govern elections. We, the county, are merely agents of the state in governing an election. So we must follow the Elections Code, particularly the sections that we have here, and make sure that we maintain the integrity of the state legislative act to ensure that the local chief elections officer and registrar of voters have the flexibility and the ability to govern elections, to administer elections, particularly in the area of being timely, and also the ability to react to any issues that may come up. Having said that, the most important thing that Mr. Church has here, and to answer your question, Mr. Callagie, is transparency and openness. Our process is just that. And that's why we're here before you today. In terms of the process that we go through, it's important to keep in mind that the elections structure in the state of California has very few vendors that are state-qualified, state-certified, to provide services. So our pool is relatively limited. Second of all, we have long-lasting relationships, going back to 2008, for example, with K&amp;H Ballot Services, to provide services to the county. These are true, tried, and proven vendors that have served San Mateo County and our residents admirably during this whole period of time. These vendors, for example, K&amp;H, in this particular instance, has the economy, scale, and the power to provide ballot paper, for example, during COVID, when the whole state of California could not find ballot paper at all. But because we had a vendor in a long-term relationship with K&amp;H, we were able to provide ballot paper to all of the residents of San Mateo County and conduct the elections. A lot of other counties were in a tight situation. That is why we select and work with vendors that have a proven history with us. When we do enter an agreement with a K&amp;H, for example, one of the largest vendors in the United States, we do look at our previous agreements that we have with the vendor. We also speak to other county operations, other county election offices, to make sure that our pricing is competitive. And they take care of us. And they take care of other counties, too. But we do our homework in terms of checking with other counties, checking previous budgets, previous contracts that we have, that we're getting a good deal for the citizens of San Mateo County. We do that with all of our vendors, in terms of, for example, our printing supply, supplier, which we recently changed. We went out and we looked at three or four different vendors. We spoke to other counties. We spoke to our previous vendor. We spoke to the vendor that we thought had the power and capacity to conduct a really large election, and quickly. So we go through a process to select these vendors internally, as is authorized by the state legislature and the Elections Code. What we've done here with the MSA is to go one step further, is to have that process be open so the board, the public, and others can ask questions and basically be knowledgeable as to the procedures that we use in the elections operation. But we do have to adhere to the state requirements in terms of the procurement process of being able to select vendors quickly and rapidly. And sometimes that may not comply with the county's procedures, for example, with OpenGov on procurement because of the time factor. But nonetheless, as an elected official, Mr. Church makes sure that we follow best practices in the selection of these vendors. So if I may go, these are the vendors. I can go through them one by one, but I will basically, I think, have you answer any questions that you might have regarding that. If we can go to the next slide. I basically, again, covered this slide. And the MSA model that we have ensures continuity and stability in the process. It protects and it also assists us to have traditional, work with traditional and longstanding relationships with our vendors. Of course, they are reliable and efficient, as I mentioned, and ensures a secure and accurate, timely administration of elections. Next page. And on that note, I will answer any questions that you may have.
Before we go to questions, do we have any public comment?
I don't have any speaker cards from chambers, so at this time, we'll take comments on Zoom. Please click Raise Hand to Comment for Item Four. We have two hands raised, so I'll take a final call for a public comment, if you'd like. Great. Final call at this time for this item. Please raise your hand now. Final call has been made. Our two speakers are Sabrina and Catherine Carter. Sabrina, please unmute and begin.
Yes, I come to as one of the people who hold all political powers, soon jurors. These voting machines have been known to cause all sorts of problems. It's actually not a voting machine, but a software system. It's only Smartmatic and Dominion that have the software. And there's all sorts of vulnerabilities. It's been proven over and over. That's why you're having such a problem. As far as printing the paper, you make sure that it's a very lightweight paper and demand everybody use Sharpie markers so it bleeds through. And I'd love to see what your adjudication rate is. I'd imagine it's astronomical prior to 2020. So with that said, this is a lot of money, and the people should vote on this. This is something that affects the people. And it's not really in line with the Constitution, because a lot of these mail-in ballots are not secret, because there's holes in them. There's also coding in them that tells you the political party. And it is a violation of rights and the Constitution. And another instance of you being in malfeasance. It's also election malfeasance and voter fraud. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Carter, please unmute and begin.
Yes. Catherine Carter, soon jurors, one of the people, I just have one question. Who manufactures all the software, USB ports, the chips that are in these machines? Who's the manufacturer? And are they connected to the vendors? Because that's the pattern that's been across the states. We've had foreign companies manufacturing not only printing ballots, but also manufacturing the software that's been and the vendors are represented in those foreign countries as well, that are manufacturers that are producing these components to the machines. To that question. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment, Mr. President.
Bring it back to the board. Supervisor Spear.
Well, let's answer that first question. Are these printed in foreign countries?
No.
All right. And her other question about the code.
The code is approved by the Secretary of State. It is written basically locally in the United States. However, there may be external factors that go into that production, of which I am not privy to at this juncture. But the code goes through a rigorous state certification process at the Secretary of State level. It has to be tested. It has to be verified. It has to be retested every time, basically, that we conduct an election. So it's a state-certified process, and we have, again, only state-certified vendors that we can work with in the conduct of elections.
So your presentation sort of suggests that there's a very limited number of sanctioned companies that we can contract with based on the state, which creates a, not monopolistic, but a very small universe of vendors. Is that what you're telling us, basically?
That is correct.
So for instance, how many vendors are there that provide the services that DFM?
DFM, in the state of California, I believe there's two to three.
Two to three. Okay.
That's our elections, voter registration.
And DMT?
I don't know how many vendors.
K&amp;H?
K&amp;H, my understanding is that there's probably in the neighborhood around, and again, I can't be held to a specific number here, but in the state of California that have the ability to produce that ballot, maybe two or three.
Two to three. Precise printing and mailing?
Precise mailing and printing are vendors that are local. And we do use statewide vendors. There are many more vendors than just two or three. Those are the vendors that we feel have the strength and capacity to basically produce our sample ballot timely. And they've been, you know, basically exemplary in their approach.
And the $300,000 to Silicon Valley Community Foundation, why are we doing that?
Oh, that is
Is that discretionary?
That is discretionary, yes. And that is a model program that has won several awards in the state and is right now being presented to the California Association of Counties for an award as an exemplary program, a model program, that's been started in San Mateo County, working with the Silicon Valley Foundation, to work with our community-based organizations to provide voter education and outreach to targeted communities that traditionally have not participated in the electoral process.
I understand that. But I mean, could we not use Thrive, for instance, which is San Mateo County-centric?
Thrive has been part of that process. Thrive would be a community, Thrive works with Silicon Valley. To be honest with you, yes, there are others that probably could, nonprofits that could step up to the plate, but we don't believe that they have the capacity.
So what's the administrative cost that is taken off by Silicon Valley?
10% to 15%.
Okay. 10X, how many other companies provide those services?
E-poll books.
It's just a software, correct? It's a training module.
10X is a training module, but it is, the training module is for the operation of our e-poll books, which are used at the vote centers to intake voters at the time of, to register and at the time that they are voting. There are other vendors, I would say, 10X, in the e-poll book arena, there's probably, in the state of California, that are certified, three, four.
And then Topin Merrill?
Topin Merrill, again, are vendors, they're printers. And there are numerous vendors in the state of California that can provide printing services.
Okay. So for each of these that you've listed,
Yes.
these contracts, you say, go back to, some of them to 2008.
That is correct.
Okay. Would you say most of them go back that far?
No. The ones that go back quite a ways would be DFM, would be K&amp;H. We've used Topin Merrill, but they don't go back to 2008, but for several years. I would say most of them go back five years or so, in terms of the number of years that we've worked with them. Except, with the exception of K&amp;H and DFM. And 10X, 10X, we've been around with them for probably
The lion's share of the money goes to K&amp;H and Topin Merrill, both for printing.
Correct.
And you say that there are two or three others that are licensed or certified in California. It seems to me that it's a very closed environment. And it's very discretionary. And the discretion is within your office to determine whether or not you want to go with a particular company. It's not like there's an RFP that goes out to all of those who provide these services, correct?
There is an RFI process. We do send out letters when we are in the process of selecting a vendor. We do not do that annually. But the process is one that we basically look at individual vendors and their capacity to provide the services necessary to conduct an election under the tight timeframes that are imposed on us by the state.
And then the increase in the cost for each of these vendors is what percent per year?
It depends. I don't have the percentage increase per year that I can share with you right now. I certainly can get you that information. The biggest increase that we've had over the years has been in ballot printing and ballot supplies, paper ballot supplies, because of the limitations of the availability of ballot paper. And that has experienced quite a bit of an increase over the years.
Okay. If you could provide us with the percentage increases,
Sure.
that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
And then my last question is, is there anything we can do differently to make it less expensive?
That's a very good question. I think that
If you need to take it under advisement, you certainly can and get back to us.
I certainly will.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Supervisor Mueller.
Thank you for the presentation. It was very interesting. Can I ask, you mentioned when you do the RFIs that you send the letters directly. Is there also a public Is there also a public posting of the request for information to vendors?
No.
Okay. And how often, what triggers when the department does an RFI process?
When we feel that a vendor does not have the capacity to fulfill its obligations in providing that service. We've had instances where a vendor may have been late in meeting the statutory timeline for mailing our sample ballots. When we get a red flag like that, we look at it very closely. We will not only speak to the vendor, we will also speak to other counties. We will look at, we will get recommendations as to who are the best and the powerhouses in the area, and we will meet with them. And we will ask for a proposal. Then we will evaluate those proposals, and then we will select accordingly.
And how often have you gone out to RFI?
Within the last five years, probably three times.
And it's for specific?
For specific, yes, for specific vendors.
And when you've gone out to RFI in those circumstances, you were looking to replace a vendor, so you sent letters to other vendors?
They're targeted, absolutely. We reach out.
Okay. It's a different RFI process than I'm used to. So the RFI process that I've been used to would be a county agency or a state agency would do a request for information to the general, generally, so that you would get as much competition as possible within that. And then, of course, within that selection process, because you're not bound by cost, obviously, in a circumstance like this, you're able to look at delivery rates, but still you would do a full post. So I find that interesting. What I, just humbly from the boards, what I would sort of suggest to the department to protect itself from criticism, also just to follow standard practices, would be to do a full-scale posting of RFIs and then do them periodically for all of the vendors prior to putting together the MSA on a repeated scheduled basis. So, but I very much appreciate the pressures the department is under to do that. I just think that would better, if asked by the public, are you getting the best price and are you getting all the competition and putting together the MSA? That would sort of be the standard practice that you would look at doing. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you for the suggestion. That is a very good suggestion.
Thank you for the presentation. And I think our county and our Elections Office is generally very, very well-regarded across the state. And I think you spoke earlier to one of the programs and collaborations that are actually going, are actually recognized on a regular basis at the state level. And so I want to commend you and your team for all of that work. I do think there have been several very fair questions just around, you know, what the process is like. But I wanted to, I wanted to take a moment just to say that I think it's probably good practice for us as a board to give very detailed questions ahead of time so that we get the benefit of having the response in the moment and of the public having the response as well. And that's not on you at all, but just saying it so that we can be a little bit more effective and get the information we're seeking in a timely way. But I did, I had a meeting with, I think, both you and Mark at one point, and we went into the details around many of the programs that the Elections Office and the... One of them was like the Youth Advisory Council or something like that, which was new. Just wondering if you can give an update on some of those newer initiatives and how they're going and how they kind of intersect with the vendor list that we're seeing before us today.
Great. Thank you for the question. We're very proud of the Youth Advisory Commission Committee that has been established by our office. We've reached out to all of the high schools. We have over 60 participants that have applied. And it is to engage youth at an early stage, 15- and 16-year-olds, before they even register to vote in the electoral process. And it's really a two-pronged process. One is to actually educate youth to the electoral process and their responsibility as citizens of this great country of ours to vote and to have their voice heard. The other, of course, is for us to listen to them. And that is, what do they advise in terms of our best outreach efforts and our abilities to reach out to youth? And this last election, the special election, was a classical example of advice that was provided to us to reach out to youth. And the advice was to send out postcards directly to youth ages 15, that are registered to vote, ages 15 to 25. So we sent out a direct mailer from the Youth Advisory Committee, sanctioned by our office, to encourage people to vote. So we had a direct outreach with hard copy postcards. The other was a very innovative approach, too. And that was to use digital connections and digital advertising using the cell phone. Because one of the youth said, "We don't look at hard copies. You know, send us mail and we'll probably throw it away." But we're on our phones all the time. So, said, "That's a great idea." So what we did was, we actually contracted with Bay Area Digital Vending, Digital Advertising Company that we use for other areas in elections. And we sent out over 250,000 impressions. We identified over 47,000 youth. And we got a tremendous response. From that, actually, almost 1,000 youth went to our website to find out more information, to register to vote, and to get information on how to vote. That was a great idea that came from the youth to reach out to youth. And we plan on doing that even more. One of the areas with youth that has been identified by the Secretary of State, and in particular, Orange County, the registrar of voters down there, mentioned that youth have a very high rejection rate and a very high rate of not responding to cure letters. A cure letter is a letter that goes out if you didn't sign your ballot. "We will send you a letter. By the way, you didn't sign your ballot. Could you please give us your signature here so we can have your ballot count?" The rate for youth is extremely low statewide. That's one of the goals that we're setting, is to see how we can impact that in a positive way. So the Youth Advisory Committee has been just a fantastic experience, I think, for both the youth and ourselves. And we're just starting. And I expect that you will see much more and hear much more of that in the future.
Thank you. And then I know we previously discussed the $300,000 to, I'm forgetting, Silicon Valley Community Foundation?
Yes.
And I know North Central San Mateo was mentioned earlier today, and I wanted to take a moment just to highlight that. I don't know all the details of this program, to be honest with you, but I imagine that how that collaboration and partnership works is that Community Foundation of Silicon Valley, or Silicon Valley Community Foundation, partners with more local nonprofits and manages those relationships, like, for example, I imagine maybe like El Consilio of San Mateo County, who then works and are very trusted messengers in North Fair Oaks or in, you know, San Bruno, South San Francisco, North Central San Mateo, who go into those communities and recognize that although there are maybe a high number of registered voters, that's not translating to people actually voting. And so then they work in those communities to try to increase that, those statistics and that data.
Yes, and the methodology that's used is that we use data, statistical data, to determine the precincts that have the lowest turnout compared to the general population. And those precincts are targeted. We do work with Thrive. We work with an umbrella of nonprofit agencies. And just a quick history on that program. That really started between Board of Supervisors here and Mr. Church at a meeting where our members from, oh, I'm sorry. Where members of our Voting Accessibility Advisory Committee presented both to Mr. Church and the board an idea, and that was to work with trusted messengers in using our voter education and outreach funds under the Voters Choice Act, but they're provided by the County of San Mateo, you. And that money was then a program established with a portion of that money to go out to community-based organizations. At that time, it was decided by the group that the Silicon Valley Foundation was probably the best agency to be the umbrella agency to then set out an RFP process. So Silicon Valley Foundation does an RFP process for community-based organizations to participate in the program. It's evaluated. They do then provide a report. We analyze the success of the report. So it is a very collaborative process, and it's a very detailed process that in that particular instance, with the selection of the CBOs, an RFP is used.
Awesome, thank you. And just to kind of take a step back, I think this idea of, you know, reaching out to communities that don't have high voting rates is really important. But it's not just something that we need to rely on government for, actually, is my belief. I think it's also really important that, as elected leaders, we make the effort to reach out to people and, not people, to people and communities and be mindful of how we can help motivate voters, how we can help motivate participation, how we can help build, rebuild trust between government and communities, and how we are an extension of the investment that's already been made through you and your team in, for this issue. It's a really important one, actually, right? But it's not just one for you to solve, I think. So that's it for my questions. Thank you. I'm actually, the more I learn about the work that our Elections Office does and how it compares statewide, the more proud I am of our county. That doesn't mean that, you know, there's not areas for us to still improve on. I think there definitely are. There always are areas to improve on. But, yeah, but thank you.
You're more than welcome. If I may add a point, interestingly enough, I believe today the Silicon Valley Foundation will be issuing a press release on the study that they have commissioned with the Haas Corporation on the public-private partnership that we started here in San Mateo County. And Yolo County joined us three or four years after. But the result of that was a report that is now being shared with all registrar of voters in the state, public and private nonprofit organizations. And it will be released today. I'll make sure that you get a copy of that press release and a copy of that report because it speaks very highly of what we're doing here in San Mateo County with that particular program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Suraz Goshay.
Sure, thank you. Thank you for the report. Can you remind me again how our county compares to other counties when it comes to election costs? Do we know?
I cannot answer that question. How we compare with other counties? Because as the registrars of voters that we meet with, you know, the Association of County Clerks in the state always say, "Elections are local, and they have very many different challenges." But election costs, per se, in terms of the cost per registered voters, varies extremely. It has a wide spectrum because it depends on so many factors. For example, you know, the cost of an election determines, is determined by the jurisdiction, the number of registered voters, the number of jurisdictions participating in an election, and the actual election itself, how many candidates are running and the cost of the sample ballot, which can vary from election to election. So, and that varies from county to county. So election costs are very, very local. And they have, again, those are the primary factors, though, is our, how many jurisdictions are in an election? How many registered voters are in that election? And ultimately, how does that, and candidates? And how does that result in sample ballot and voter information pamphlet costs? Because that increases that. And also the size of the actual ballot, the number of cards that are in a particular election. So there's factors that are unique to each county, which makes it somewhat hard to compare on a county-by-county basis.
Do we know how much it costs per voter in our own county? What are we, if you were to look at per voter, what are we looking at, elections? What's the cost?
Not one standard amount. It depends on the election for the factors that I just mentioned. It can be as low as $5, $6 per voter. It could be as high as $15 to $16 per voter, depending on the election. And we can get those costs for you per election. But it does vary from election to election based on those variables.
And what safeguards are in place to manage cost overruns of the $15 million, that cap?
Basically, our contractual relationships with our contracts. And the requirements that we set forth in those contracts are the controls that we have with respect, not only to the program, but also to the funding. And those are the limits, those are parameters, those are the guardrails. And we make sure that they are adhered to. So it's, again, the process of sitting down with your vendor, determining what the costs are, establishing a contract, and monitoring that contract and those expenditures to ensure that they comply with the provisions of the contract.
Thank you. And lastly, I keep hearing about the paper. What's the difference between election paper and other paper? What makes it different?
It is the quality of the paper, number one, the bond size, the watermarks that have to go on it also and be able to be retained. So it's unique paper that has to be basically purchased. We have, our vendor works with Canadian vendors and vendors in Washington and Oregon to basically, I mean, we're talking now about the actual paper suppliers, you know, they're growing it, and lock those contracts up for that specialized paper to be sent to you in a ballot.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jim, thank you very much. Really appreciate the work that you and Mark have done. You know, through the county attorney, you know, I do have a question. My understanding, and if you can, you know, we've talked a little bit about the election code and how that's sort of governance and relevance. And then we talked about the San Mateo County Ordinance Code. Can you just give a little background on that from a legal perspective? I had the opportunity to look through the said language through the election code. What is the action that we're taking today in light of the election code, which would seem to me supersede the San Mateo County Ordinance Code?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I, just to sort of dig in a little bit to the Elections Code. The Elections Code does provide, as has been noted, that the, in Mr. Yarzaria's presentation, that the county elections official, when he's seeking to provide materials required for an election, is not required to utilize the services of the county purchasing agent. That's provided in the Elections Code in a couple of places, Section 13,001 and Section 14,100. That said, I don't believe that, you know, the Elections Code can be read for the proposition that the Board of Supervisors is, you know, sort of handing over its oversight authority, which is something that the Board of Supervisors always has with respect to fiscal measures. The framing of this item is one that we've, over the course of many years, kind of put together and determined is compliant with state law. It provides essentially that rather than working through the procurement, I'm sorry, the purchasing agent, the Board of Supervisors recognizing the need for expeditiousness in connection with the conducting of elections, as again, Mr. Yarzaria has, you know, cited in his presentation, the Board of Supervisors is able to delegate contracting authority with appropriate safeguards to the Elections Officer, which is what you're doing today, is delegating to the Chief Elections Officer contracting authority subject to appropriate safeguards as you all see fit. So, you know, we'll note again, this item, identify specific vendors, identify specific maximum amounts that can be spent. And it also provides for a waiver of otherwise applicable competitive processes. And subject, again, to the various questions and safeguards that you all have deemed to be appropriate in this case. So we believe this item is framed up appropriately as a delegation of a contracting authority to the Chief Elections Officer, again, subject to the conditions that the Board has identified.
All right, through the county attorney, one of the things I'd like staff to do, or, you know, the county executive, is to really do an assessment and an evaluation of procurement similar to the assessor's office. I think our policy is very clear on many levels, but this is sort of an example of the election code relative to the authority. And I just want to make sure if there's a way to sort of look at other departments, if there are similarities there. And Jim, let me get back to you. You know, the issue is with elections, my understanding is... You know, the, the issue is with elections, my understanding is the ability to have flexibility, the ability to sort of, as things come, right? Because I think at the end of the day, people want to make sure they get their ballot. And we have, my understanding, we have multiple cities, multiple school districts, multiple jurisdictions. And so I think that sort of flexibility, I would assume, allows you the ability to carry out an election that is effective. If we were to move forward with a typical procurement policy, that may sort of delay people's ability to potentially vote, right? So I guess where I'm trying to go with this is, in terms of an environment that's fluid, right? Measure A was an example of that. It would seem to me, being able to, to give you these, these funds would allow you the ability to, if something does occur or something was to happen, to move in a pretty effective way. Is that, do you think that's a correct assessment?
Yes, and that, that's why the Election Code is written as it is, and so is the San Mateo County Ordinance, is to give that flexibility. But again, having said that, Mr. Church is committed to a transparent, open process that is competitive and that we get the best vendors, given the limited pool that we have, to work for San Mateo County, to provide the services to us. So we have, we're all in agreement here that there's a process that has to be followed to ensure that we have the best, most qualified vendor providing the services to San Mateo County. And it's true, we have seventy jurisdictions in San Mateo County, we have twenty cities, we have twenty-five, twenty-six school districts, we have more cities in San Mateo County than San Diego County. Relatively small county geographic size, but elections-wise, we're one of the largest and we have tremendous responsibility. We have over five hundred thousand eligible voters, four hundred and fifty thousand registered voters, and it goes on and on. When you start looking at the complexities of structuring election, we invite you all to observe that process, the, the construction of the official ballot. I am still amazed as to what our staff does, and by the way, elections could not be run if it wasn't for our staff, the people that we have, the professionals there, and the technology that this board has provided to this, to this department is absolutely incredible. And that's why we are the best in the state in elections. But again, it is a very, very complex process that brings together a variety of things. If you take a look at the official ballot, for example, okay? The construct of the official ballot. We had during the last major election, about four hundred, three hundred to four hundred different ballot styles. What's a ballot style? Well, if you live in Redwood City, you have the Redwood City School District, you have the City of Redwood City, you have a Water District, you have another sanitary district. That ballot style is unique to, by address and by the, the address of that registered voter to that voter. That has to be constructed specifically to incorporate all of those different jurisdictions, all of the measures, all of the candidates. We have to have a process that brings all that information in. We then have to superimpose that through our geographical information system on the territories and the boundaries. We have to make sure that when we have an election, that it is within the right boundary and not necessarily what we see, you know, is the city limits of Redwood City is the true city. It's, it's basically, you know, governed by the assessor's parcel layer and, and the, the tax boundary information that's required. So it is a very, very, very complex process, and then on top of that, you have to meld four hundred and fifty thousand registered voters into that plethora of data to come up with one ballot for that particular person in that jurisdiction. It is an incredible technical process, and again, our staff aces it all the time. There may be a mistake that's done every now and then, but we catch it quickly. In elections, you have to expect that there's going to be an error or there's going to be a problem. But the true test of an elections office is what redundant systems do you have in place? What policies and procedures do you follow when something like that happens to quickly resolve the problem? And that's what we're very good at.
All right. Supervisor Mueller.
Yeah, I didn't, and I apologize, you'll have to hear, listen to this, Mr. Yarzaria, but there was a comment made at the board about sending questions in advance to departments. I just wanted to respond to it constructively. I confess, I'm one of those supervisors who from prime to time ask questions without getting advanced notice to the department, but I think that's a result of fact. I'm also intrigued by the presentation and they inspire questions as I think about the issue. I do admit, I'm not entirely scripted in the questions I ask, and I certainly think there are times preparation identifies questions, even detailed questions quite late. Now, we've, the way we've dealt with this in our office is we've tried to meet with departments in advance when we can, because that way, that intrigue or inspiration might come early, but that doesn't always work either, and sometimes they give us a head up. So to the extent it's helpful, though, I do think our meetings could be organized differently to deal with this issue. I do think it'd be, I, to my colleagues, I think our meetings could be bifurcated, where we did presentations and the consent agenda first, perhaps on a Monday evening or a Monday, late after, Monday afternoon, and then we did a regular agenda on Tuesdays, or we bifurcated it in the day and Tuesdays. And I think if we did that and there was a gap between the two sessions, where we took all the, all the, the presentations and awards and the consent, and we moved that to the side and we had a small gap, it would allow us to work with the departments with any remaining questions we had and have a business meeting where everyone was present, knew what was going to be the business meeting of that day, and we focused fully on that. So I offer that to you all to think about. I know it's not an agenda item, but I didn't want to let the moment pass without raising it constructively to you all.
Since we're now talking about this, I think there's great merit in being able to have a fulsome discussion like we just have had without the sense of time being constricted. And because we have a lighter agenda today, we've been able to spend a lot of time with you, whether you liked it or not, to delve into the issues relative to elections, which I think is, is very valuable. I support separating out the presentation component of our activities because it tends to take two hours of our time at every board meeting, and then all of the department discussions are constricted in how much time we spent on them. So I would endorse that. As to questions, I think we all ask questions of the departments in anticipation of the presentation and get answers. But questions do come up during presentations, and we should not feel somehow encumbered and not be allowed to ask those questions. So I continue to feel strongly that we've got to be nimble, and that means that sometimes questions can't be answered at the time we asked it, but then the department head will get back to us, and if we have follow-up questions, we can ask it. That's what a legislative process is all about.
All right. Thank you so much. Mike Callagie.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate, the reason I brought this before the board today was really out of an abundance of transparency. It's a complicated matter, it is a lot of money spent. I believe that Mr. Church, his office, Mr. Church does a fine job in elections and serves the people well. To the extent of, you know, I just wanted the board to feel comfortable with how the process was being run. I mean, to the extent that, you know, the board wanted an RFI, you know, they can certainly do that a year in advance, where, I mean, obviously, there's time constraints when you get close to an election, but a year in advance, there'd be, you know, the opportunity. And again, it's the spirit of making sure that the money that we spent is, is well-spent and that we've looked at every opportunity to cut costs. To the extent the board is satisfied with Mr. Yarzaria's response to that and that they do that already, great. It was more for transparency reasons that I brought it forward.
Okay. Supervisor Mueller.
One last thing on that. Just, I do, I, if, if the board is interested in looking at bifurcating the meeting, I would humbly suggest for you all to think about moving consent with that first section. We don't use consent agenda that much, we don't move stuff in and off it that much, but if we did, we might, if we did have it two meetings, we might decide, I don't need to hear that presentation, that's fine, let's move that to consent. So we really focused in on what we wanted to have expansive discussions about. And on the last note of this, Mr. Yarzaria, I thank you for the presentation today, thank you for listening to that, that portion of the discussion, I appreciate it.
You know, my, my thought on this issue, you know, there'll be an appropriate time in, in place. I mean, I have one more meeting, being the president of the, the board, I think just in terms of, you know, how this moves forward, what I would suggest to the board is, you know, we will have a, a new chair next year, and, you know, I think that's probably the appropriate place to, to have the conversation, that's with the, the future chair. With that, Ms. Corzo.
Thank you. Being that the majority of the rest of the agenda are my items, I don't want to, like, prolong anything, but I do, you know, if I do become the president of the, of the board, there are a lot of things that I have been thinking about in terms of how to make our meetings more effective, more transparent, you know, just working to improve our governance as a team, and we can all have those discussions at that time. And yeah, I'll just, I'll just end it there. But thank you for the suggestions. I definitely want us as a board to have room to talk about all of those things, and I appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
All right. With that, can I get a motion on this item?
I'll move it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Goshay?
Yes.
President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Yarzaria.
You're welcome.
We are now on to Measure K item. This is from the Second District. Item five authorizes a one-time grant of district discretionary Measure K funds not to exceed twenty thousand dollars to Samaritan House for resilient Samaritan House building operational strength in times of crisis.
Thank you. I'm excited to introduce this Measure K item meant to support the Resilient Samaritan House initiative to make sure this core agency can continue to operate through emergencies, through serious emergencies. As we know, in emergencies, it's more important than ever for our most vulnerable residents to access the services they, they need, but it's also a time when power, elevators, and other basic infrastructure can make it impossible to service provider, for service providers to operate. And so I do believe we have Jerome Olimpiada, Associate Director of CES at Samaritan House on Zoom, to share a few remarks. Welcome, Jerome.
Hi, good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. Thank you for your time and consideration this morning. My name is Jerome Olimpiada. I am the Associate Director of Coordinated Entry Services for Samaritan House, San Mateo County. Samaritan House is launching Resilient Samaritan House. It's an organization-wide initiative that encompasses our emergency operations plan, our continuity of operations plan to ensure uninterrupted delivery of essential services. The benefits to the community are very clear, streamlined and unified crisis response, safe and fully functional service sites where residents can, can continue to access critical care and resources, also a stronger and more resilient safety net for the entire district. These investments will also support our role in the community's broader emergency response system, positioning Samaritan House as a vital partner in the community for resilience efforts. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. President.
Thank you, Jerome. I also just wanted to add some of the specific items that this grant will be funding, just to make it very clear what we're talking about when we mean, you know, being climate-ready for disasters. We're talking about a large solar generator so that the kitchen can continue to function in case of an emergency, small power stations for staff to charge IT equipment that they need to continue to provide services, an evacuation chair for the stairwell at Samaritan House because it is multiple floors, two tower and floodlights for client safety in case power is an issue and services and food and other distributions have to continue into the night, and then also a hot water hand washing station for sanitary purposes. And there were many other parts of this grant that we weren't able to fund, but that we were very supportive of. I would say I was, I've been very impressed with how Samaritan House has really thought this out and thought about how they could continue to function in a crisis. And while all of this equipment is meant for large-scale disasters, it also can benefit Samaritan House in the community in other ways on a more regular basis. And so Jerome, thank you so much for being here to, to share more about that, and it's my understanding that some of my colleagues have questions, so we'll gladly take those now. Thank you.
Supervisor Spear.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Jerome, and thank you Supervisor Corzo. You know, this is kind of an interesting issue because we have core agencies throughout the county, and if in fact, they do not have proper equipment to deal with disaster, then we should be looking at all of them. First point. Secondly, and it should be county-wide in this application, and secondly, to you, Jerome, you know, this is actually a pretty modest request. What are the other equipment that you need to be truly resilient?
Well, these items, I, I think what we want to do is kind of multiply these items across. So with, with the amount of money that we are seeing here, we're trying to, to pick the, the best locations that we can have this equipment at, and it's going to be spread across four different locations, at Samaritan House, El Camino House, the kitchen, the medical center, and the main location on Pacific Boulevard. So ideally, we would like to also include Samaritan, Safe Harbor in our location as well, too, but given the requests that's come through, I believe with these items, we're able to cover the main access points such as the medical center and the Pacific location along with El Camino House.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Callagie, I'm, I'm wondering whether we should be looking at this in a more wholesale approach. I mean, Safe Harbor is a great example of one that should have some resilience as well. So it seems like we should be doing this in a more, less of a patchwork and more of a comprehensive county-wide approach.
I, I'd like to jump in before you respond, Mr. Callagie. So I, I think this is really the purpose of discretionary Measure K, right? It's to allow for these kinds of applications to come up and then get more visibility for larger needs, and I think, I, I agree with what you're saying. This item is local for District Two's main core agency. I think it, it is a good thing for all of our core agencies to think about, and Thrive actually has done work with our core agencies at a county level to initiate conversations about how to be more resilient and how to prepare. I, I think this is a reflection of different core agencies being at different places in that work. So we're recommending this for funding so that we can...
I'm not objecting to that.
Okay, I would like to finish what I'm saying. Thank you. So I do think that it's good for us to think about on, on a larger scale, but it is, I wouldn't call it patchwork, I would say this is like seed funding for urgent needs district-wide. I think it's great for all of our districts to think about this need in our own specific districts. So go ahead, Mr. Callagie.
Thank you. Yeah, it is interesting in that we are providing some of these resiliency measures to some of our critical infrastructure, especially where they tend to go down on the coast, for example. But I, I do think that's a, a good suggestion that we look at, I mean, really, the Navigation Center and, and Safe Harbor and other locations where we have critical needs in the county, and we're happy to undergo that additional study to, to augment this here.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And I just want to jump in to say, the full budget ask was, I think, about seventy-five thousand dollars for this item and included seven solar generators, eighteen power stations, four evac chairs, tower and floodlights, hot watering, multiple hot water hand washing stations, fifty ladder lanterns, a sat phone, one Starlink equipment, and eight handheld radios. And so we didn't fund the full item, but just so, like, we have the full context of, you know, what was put in the Measure K request and then what we actually funded. It's just a start, it's not the full ask. The asks can be very, like, in-depth.
Yeah, we'd, we'd be happy to go back and look at those additional costs.
Supervisor Mueller.
So I appreciate the discussion, but I appreciate where you're going Supervisor Spear and County Executive Callagie. So I also wrestle with this issue. I have specific requests on the coast that will be coming to you all very soon. But what we did on the coast when I first came into the office was we realized that we needed to have a resilient infrastructure strategic plan, that we had to look at all of the critical infrastructure on the coast, which was, which was threatened by climate change, and determined, taken all of the different agencies, all the different special districts, and look at what their infrastructure plans were and then rank them. And this board actually funded that project. And we're now working with Congressman Mercado's office and with our legislators in a very tough environment to figure out how we get these items funded, as well as going, looking at private partners. And that framework that the Department of Emergency Management came up is something certainly that I think, at the time we did it, was then Supervisor Slocum who said, why aren't we doing this county-wide? And I think what you just raised today, Supervisor Spear, is just that it's time for us, because we're going to get more of these requests, to not just fund these projects, but apply that framework of how we rank them and which ones need to go in what order. So we best use those dollars. And that would be something that we have some, we have some practice now doing in the county as we looked at what we did on the coast, that we could apply that same framework that Department of Emergency Management put through a lot of time and effort to go ahead and try to bring that framework to the full county.
Do you want to ask?
My question is, I'm hearing the Department of Emergency Management. How do we, should we re-engage them in this work?
Yes, I mean, I'll... Yes, I will re-engage them. I'll have them work with the various departments who are working with our nonprofits and other critical infrastructure as we look at, you know, public works and the role that they play in the maintenance of a lot of these facilities. What would they need if power went down during a major earthquake or natural disaster? We'll look at all those and then try to set a priority and bring that back to the board.
And as a chair, I can work with Shruti as well. I would love to be a part of that conversation.
Great.
I will tell you, other counties took it so seriously, cities and counties, that like the city of Houston, city of Los Angeles. At one time, the city of San Francisco and county of San Francisco actually created resiliency officers whose job was to go ahead and implement these programs. So it's not a light lift. And we're probably going to have to come back as a board and prioritize where we want the Department of DEM, if this is where we're going to land it. And we're probably going to have to give them budget for it, too. So it's, but it isn't a light lift at all.
So I just want to make, be clear that, Mr. Callagie, you will now look at all of the resiliency needs county-wide, come back to the board with recommendations that we can then evaluate.
That's correct.
Thank you.
We'll take a look at that.
I just, I want to say something. You know, I've been on this board for nine years. And I think the importance of district discretionary dollars have really made a difference. In my, my district, and it's not just me saying this, the data shows it through the previous supervisor and the other supervisor, the investment in North San Mateo County for, without Measure K, it wasn't there. And I think each supervisor has different relationships with different CBOs, other leaders in the community. What I would say to this board and to future boards is really, and I, you know, East Palo Alto and, you know, in particular, and other cities, those investments really make a difference. I'll just share a quick story with you. We had probably one of our largest CBOs was really, you know, really had financial issues. And what we're able to do through Measure K literally was to keep the lights on. Now they're, they're in a better, better position. So I think as policymakers, we, you know, we think that each city, each town is the same. But what I've seen through Measure K is the impact to really get dollars to people who need it the most. And I hope future boards don't take that lightly. There isn't a, in this county, you look at the CBOs or you look at the core agencies, there's not a one-size-fit-all. So what you're doing at Samaritan House might be vastly different than what you're doing at Daly City Partnership or other nonprofits. And so district elections, I think, was probably the best thing that ever happened to the county of San Mateo. Took away power concentrated in a few and gave the ability for district discretionary funds, which I really do think uplift the communities that we all know. So with that, Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you. I just also wanted to add briefly that Shruti with the Department of Emergency Management, I would say, you know, not to say that it's impossible, but I would say has her hands full with trying to make sure that our 20 cities have their actual emergency plans up to date. And, you know, we're talking about multiple jurisdictions, multiple cities. And, and there was a lot of infrastructure to create in that department when she took it over. And so I think Thrive Alliance and the way that they've led this conversation with the nonprofits has been really impactful because while DEM has been focused on making sure our cities are prepared and even aware of like what their emergency needs are and how that works with the county, having Thrive do that work with the nonprofits has been really essential. So maybe a partnership with Thrive to, to fund that work that they're already doing or fund it to a level that is more appropriate for the urgency, I think, is something worth exploring. And then I'll just end by saying that, to me, this is not, this is not an either/or. It's a both, right? Like, it's, we should fund these things through district discretionary dollars to get them done as nonprofits show that they're ready to, and are doing the work of making their strategic plans for resiliency. And, and we look at the bigger picture and try to focus and lead our community to all be more resilient. So with that, I want to thank Jerome for being so patient on this item and for lifting up the needs of Samaritan House. And I'd like to motion to approve this Measure K request.
Before we take that motion, Supervisor Gochet.
No, I want to just say, I agree with you. It's not either or, it's an and. And I think Department of Emergency Management should still be involved in it. So I'd like to see them both having a conversation. And with that, I would second it.
Okay. Any public comment?
Sure, Mr. President. I don't have any speaker cards in chambers, but we do have one hand raised in Zoom at this time. So I will take a final call for a public comment, and this is on item five. Final call made. Our first and last speaker will be Sabrina. Please unmute and begin.
Yes, I'm just wondering how this funding benefits all your constituents and not just select people? Because that is a violation of the Fourteenth Amendment and also in the California Constitution, Article One, Section Seven. You spend this money and you have these quote-unquote partnerships with these non-governmental agencies, and it's not to the benefit of the people. It is a scam, and we know it. And you're acting in malfeasance, and you're aware of it now. You are violating your oath to the constitutions, and there's consequences for it. And it's Article One, Section Three, also gives us a right of grievance longer than one more minute. Thank you.
We have a motion. We have a second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yeah.
Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Our next Measure K item authorizes a one-time grant not to exceed $38,500 to Justice at Last, provide free legal services to survivors of human trafficking in San Mateo County. Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you. Justice at Last provides survivors of human trafficking with free legal representation and supportive services regardless of age, gender identity, abilities, nationality, or type of trafficking with this grant. Justice at Last will provide full legal representation to 10 trafficking survivors in San Mateo County, essential work that needs more funding and support. And with us on Zoom, we have Rose McCarr, founder and CEO of Justice at Last, to share a few words. Welcome, Rose.
Good morning. Thank you, Supervisor. I'm going to try to share my screen if that's possible. Excuse me. Thank you all for the opportunity to check in. I just have a quick PowerPoint and wanted to say thank you to the supervisor and everybody at the District Two team for this opportunity to briefly share with you about the proposal with, for free legal services for survivors of human trafficking. I'm Rose McCarr. I'm an attorney by profession. I founded Justice at Last in 2015. Founded it as a resident of San Mateo County, and I purposely wanted it in the county itself because I just felt the location of the county in perspective to the Bay, but then also the lack of services in San Mateo County specifically for survivors of human trafficking. We are a mobile legal service, which means that we meet clients where they're at as opposed to clients coming to us. We do have an office in Redwood City right next to the courthouse. But we really feel that it's important to be trauma-informed and survivor-centered. And we do that by meeting clients where they're at in the community. We've been out and about in the community for 10 years, and we're not just a bunch of attorneys providing legal services. We're comprised of what we refer to as client advocates. You might also call them case managers. Our client advocates work in tandem with our legal team to ensure, one, that we're being trauma-informed when we're providing our free representation, but also to ensure that basic needs are being met for the survivor of trafficking so that they can focus on their legal issues. If you don't know where you're going to sleep tonight, or you don't know how you're going to feed your children, you're not concerned with that. You have to show up in court the next day to testify. Instead, you're going to be worried about how you're going to provide for your family. And so our client advocates ensure that basic needs and much more than that is being met so that the clients can focus on their legal issues that are coming up. The other thing that we do at Justice at Last is we also provide training. Since we were founded in 2015, we've trained over 14,000 individual members of the community. And we see a direct correlation between the training that we do so that folks can recognize what trafficking is and that there are legal forms of relief very specific to survivors of trafficking. We see an uptick in increase in referrals once we've done those trainings. Here's just a quick snapshot of our 2024 data points. I know we're almost at the end of '25, but in 2024, we served 466 survivors of trafficking. This is throughout the entire Bay Area. But not all survivors that are referred to us have a legal need, or maybe they don't, their victimhood doesn't rise to that level of being human trafficked. So in 2024, we served, represented in court, 209 survivors of trafficking. And of those 209, 60 were residents and had been trafficked in San Mateo County. So it is an issue that is happening here. Aside from, you know, the Super Bowl coming up and the World Cup and those major sporting events, we know that trafficking is going on behind closed doors on a regular basis in San Mateo County. Of those that we served in 2024 in San Mateo County, 100% got crime victim rights representation and 55% received immigration relief. And then another data point I want to share, we also get, the majority of our clients come to us, not all, but many come from referrals. We received 117 referrals. This is throughout the entire Bay Area. We received zero referrals from San Mateo County in 2024. So it's a concern and that we're grateful for this opportunity here today to hopefully expand partnership with the county. The funding proposal and the impact is that we'd be providing a full legal representation to 10 trafficking survivors. And this includes being trauma-informed, client-centered, and rights-based, which is at the heart of the work that we do. Legal services can include immigration relief, crime victim rights enforcement, which means we are in the courtroom when the client is testifying against their trafficker. We are ensuring that their crime victim rights are being adhered to. We are filing in the courtroom, not just doing court accompaniment. We also do post-conviction criminal record relief because many survivors are forced to commit crimes while they're being trafficked. Someone that might be sex traffic might have a criminal record that has prostitution or solicitation. Somebody that might be labor traffic might have a criminal record that might be forced drug sales or cultivation of marijuana, something like that. We also will be providing comprehensive case management by our client advocates. And part of that is focused on crisis intervention and stabilization so the survivor can focus on what justice looks like to them and then also access to our mental health supportive services and our financial empowerment programs that we have. And I will stop there and just want to also say thank you to the supervisors, and in particular, to Supervisor Spear and Mueller and the county manager, Mike Callagie, for focusing on anti-trafficking efforts. As I briefly mentioned, in 2026, we do know that there are going to be major sporting events that are occurring, and I'm grateful that the county is recognizing the critical impact that trafficking has on the county itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. I want to just take an additional moment to think, to give thanks and express gratitude for you, Rose, for your leadership, your dedication in seeing a need in our community and working to not just meet that need on a small scale, but to lift it up Bay Area-wide and to continue to be a really important voice on our coalition, which is now called the Coalition to End, I'm sorry, the Coalition to End Abuse, Violence, and Exploitation. You have been with us since the very beginning, and your voice has been so necessary there as we continue to do the work of supporting survivors in our county. And I also just want to take a moment to remember one of our very first meetings, or maybe not the first meetings, but one of the meetings that you brought survivors to when we were still the Domestic Violence Council and how impactful their voices were and how, I would say, it really was a moment of reflection and learning for a lot of people in the room to the reality that, you know, not all survivors are women, not all survivors look and act and heal in the same ways. And I'm glad that my colleagues are working on this issue and it's very worthy of that and just continue, excited to continue to partner with you, Rose, and to continue to support the work that is so, so very needed. And just so the public knows, we're talking about the Super Bowl because it is very much statistically proven that when there are large sporting events like this, trafficking, exploitation, abuse, in many, many forms, actually increases in that area. And so it is something that I'm glad we are preparing for and that we can, we can do our best to address in a timely way. So thank you so much. Oh, yes.
Supervisor Spear.
I have a question for Rose. Thank you, Rose. Both Supervisor Mueller and I funded earlier this year $168,000, I think it was, to, within the DA's office, to provide for the resources. Explain to me, if you would, are these cases the DA chooses not to pursue? Or, I mean, I'm kind of concerned that there were 60 survivors. It says on our, in our document here, 68. But there were 60 survivors last year, and what happened to them? The DA did not take up their cases? What did you do for them? Can you just respond to some of those questions?
I'm happy to, Supervisor Spear. Thank you for those questions. I think it's really important to understand that prosecution alone does not resolve the issues for survivors of trafficking. And so the bulk of the clients that we have been serving stemmed from the Gamos matter, which was prosecuted by the California Attorney General's Office, not the San Mateo County District Attorney's Office. And so we were providing crime victim rights representation for all of them. And we continue to do that because that case is currently on appeal. Despite that, all three of the defendants were found guilty and the fourth defendant pled guilty. So that is still on appeal. And then there are other survivors that we're representing. So we're representing them, whether it's immigration relief, which is something the District Attorney's Office cannot do, right? So the prosecution's role is to prosecute and go after, to seek justice within the court system. We're providing services for the survivors once they've been identified or once they come forward and report the trafficking situation. So it could be anything from providing them... So it could be anything from providing them crime victim rights representation if they testify, but it also could be, you know, maybe they also need benefits, maybe they qualify for benefits. There are very specific forms of relief for survivors of human trafficking. One in particular, offered by the state of California, is so that survivors can get reimbursed for lost wages or for exploitation. That's very specific to, so we're ensuring that that is happening and then representing them in any other legal matter that they might have. Maybe there's a family matter where a survivor's had a child with a trafficker, and while they're no longer being trafficked, they've got this shared child. So there's a host of different types of legal forms of relief that survivors need once they're not, once they're no longer in the trafficking situation.
Do you work closely with the DA's office?
So in particular, for the Gamos matter, we're working closely with the California Attorney General's Office. Otherwise, we often get referrals from many victim witness advocates within various district attorney's offices, and, but in particular, yes, we look forward to the opportunity to partnering with the county and the District Attorney's Office. We did apply for a federal grant that we think we're going to be getting, which hopefully would allow for more partnership going forward in the 2026 year.
I would like to work with you in making sure that that relationship is built.
Thank you.
And you're probably aware that on December 8th, we're going to be hosting a training at Fiesta Hall from 2:00 to 5:00 for all electeds and local law enforcement in anticipation of both events next year, both sporting events that, but that's, hopefully, is just the beginning of what we're going to be doing in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Yes, I appreciate that. Yeah, I'm going to be facilitating, I believe, one of the panels at that session. And then also just to stress, the trafficking was happening prior to sporting events. It will continue, unfortunately, just the reality of where we're at. So I'm grateful the county's thinking ahead and looking to how to best support survivors once they've been identified. So thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to motion to approve this Measure K item.
One second. All right. Can we take public comment?
Actually, we should. Yes, I don't have any speaker cards from chambers, so we can take comments from Zoom. And we do have two hands raised. I could take a final call if that's your pleasure, Mr. President.
30 seconds, please. Timer.
30-second timer? Okay. We'll do a 30-second timer, and at this time, I'll make a final call for public comment. Final call has been made, and we have three speakers, Bruce, Sabrina, and Catherine Carter. Bruce, please unmute and begin.
Hi, Bruce Johnson, Superior Juris, one of the people. I just wondered, does this include illegals that get trafficked in also? And I'll end it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Sabrina, please unmute. Wait one moment. Please unmute Sabrina and begin.
You are in violation of Article 1, Section 3, for the right of grievance to President Carpana. You will be having to pay a consequence for that. How many of these children were lost in the system? It was over 300,000 at last count. The government is the largest purveyor of human trafficking, and this is a mockery of that system. They're being used as cheap labor during your community, and how much are being supported on taxpayers' expense? How many are reunited with their families of origin, in their country of origins? How many are minors? There's over 200,000 or 20,000 that were deemed to ban.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker, Catherine Carter, please unmute and begin.
Yes, I just, again, I want to ask how many are being reunited with their families of origin? How many have families of origin that are out of the country that need to be reunited? What are you doing about that? Are any of them being put up for adoption? You know, there's a lot of percapitation for doing that. What's happening to them?
Okay.
Thank you so much. There's a motion, there's a second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
And President Canepa. Motion passes.
Our last item, Measure K, authorizes a one-time grant not to exceed $25,000 to Latina Coalition of Silicon Valley to expand its Latina Economic Advancement Program. Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you. I'm excited to be recommending this grant to the Latina Coalition of Silicon Valley to expand their economic advancement program. With this grant, LCSV will host financial literacy and workforce development workshops covering topics such as budgeting, debt reduction, credit building, and career advancement. This work is essential to ensure that all our residents, including our immigrant community, have all the resources and skills they need to succeed in the workforce. And Latina Coalition will conduct targeted outreach to communities for these services, but services will be available to all San Mateo County residents regardless of their race or ethnicity, et cetera. And we have Jessica Vera, pronouns they/them, workforce and economic mobility specialist here with us on Zoom to share a few words. Welcome, Jessica.
Thank you. Good morning, all Supervisors. Thank you so much, Supervisor Corzo, for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Jessica Vera, pronouns they/them. I lead the Latina Economic Advancement Program, known as LEAP, at Latina Coalition of Silicon Valley. I also want to mention that I'm a volunteer, I am an advocate, and a board member within San Mateo County. But just overall, very honored as a representative from Latina Coalition to be considered for this Measure K investment and grateful for the county's recognition of the needs of all residents across San Mateo County. Context about our program. LEAP is a workforce and economic mobility program designed by Latinas for Latinas, but open to all ages 18 and up. I have had the privilege, the great privilege, of serving women who are navigating different career scenarios from low-wage work, career transitions, and systemic barriers that limit access to higher wage opportunities. Many like myself, many who are mothers, caregivers, first-generation professionals, who have the drive but haven't been exposed to resources, networks, and culturally responsive programming that help turn potential into prosperity. This is the first time LCSV must be, would be receiving funding from San Mateo County, and for us, this represents more than a grant, it represents a pathway, a pathway to intentional expansion into communities that have not historically have had access despite facing some deepest inequities in the Bay Area. With this investment, we were able to launch LEAP cohorts specifically serving underserved representative areas in San Mateo County. Provide wraparound support, childcare stipends, transportation assistance, and culturally-aligned coaching to ensure women residents here in San Mateo feel fully participate and thrive. Strengthen partnerships with local employers, community colleges, and workforce agency in the Peninsula so that everyone is able to get trained and connected to real career pathways to high-demand sectors. And lastly, increase participants' financial stability, including raising their credit scores, supporting salary increases, and helping women transition from unstable jobs into sustainable careers. This program is very unique when it integrates workforce development with leadership and community building, and hopefully, our outcomes also achieve the increase of their income, they increase the economic stability for their entire families. At Latina Coalition, we believe if you uplift one person, you uplift their families, we uplift their communities. And some of the outcomes that I do want to talk about today and share is that participants do report higher wages, they improve their financial literacy, they improve career advancement, and stronger sense of belonging, confidence, and civic participation. So a few items I have seen personally as well. This Measure K investment will allow us to bring these outcomes to San Mateo County intentionally and with deep cultural relevance. We are grateful for the county's leadership in organizing that economic mobility for residents for the entire community. San Mateo County will reach its workforce and equity goals, investing in folks who are holding families, industries, and communities together. Thank you for considering this grant recommendation and for your commitment to creating opportunities where they long, we longly want to work for. We are honored to partner with you and are happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Jessica. I just wanted to briefly add that what made this grant so relevant was that actually many of our residents have already been receiving services from Latina Coalition of Silicon Valley and have had to travel all the way to San Jose to receive these services. I remember being in my first six months as Supervisor and going to speak to one of their cohorts, and there were actually three residents there from our cohort. So the need for these services are there, and I can only imagine how many members of our community would be interested and would sign up if it was more local. And so that's what this grant is meant to show and will show. And one of my favorite things that they do for part of their services is they'll actually have a photographer come and do professional headshots for many of the participants, which I think is important for multiple reasons, but I'm excited to see how these services play out in our county, and I hope it's just the start. They have been very, very impactful in Santa Clara County, and I'm glad our residents will not have this accessible. Thank you, Jessica. And with that, I'd like to motion to approve this item.
All right, there's a motion. Have a second. All right, public comment, please. 30 seconds.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any speaker cards from chambers, so we'll take comments now from Zoom. This is for item number seven, and we have one hand raised, so I'll take a final call at this time for item seven. Final call has been made, and the two speakers will be Sabrina and Bruce. Sabrina, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. I just have some questions. I am coming Superior Juris as one of the people. Are all these services provided equally to all the people? Your website, it does specifically, is specific to illegal aliens. How are their positions broken, breakdowns of the community? Are they lawful or unlawful citizens? Are there, other than Latino, how many other races that have been served? And clearly, Ms. Corzo has targeted a community in mind, but not all of her constituents. And again, I'm going to say Article 1, Section 3, the right of grievance is violated.
Okay, next we have Bruce. Bruce, please unmute and begin.
Well, you know, I'm not actually going to beat a horse that just came out of the gate. I was going to ask a lot of the very questions that were just asked. So, you know, I think you guys need to distinguish whether we're talking lawful or unlawful citizens of the community, you know, what distinguishes that? And I'll end it there.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Corzo and seconded by Supervisor Gochet, so I'll take a roll call vote. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
And President Canepa. Motion passes.
All right. We will now, we'll conclude with two additional important items originating from the Board. Item eight is the approval of a resolution establishing a 2026 Charter Review Committee to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors regarding proposed amendments to the county charter. San Mateo County is a charter county. The general purpose of a county charter is to provide a measure of home rule to the counties of the state by giving voters the power to speak on the structure and powers of the county and its officials. Section 801 of the county charter requires that the Board of Supervisors convene a Charter Review Committee every eight years. It is now that time. That committee is tasked with reviewing the charter and after public hearings, make appropriate recommendations for amendments or revisions back to the Board. Any amendments or revisions would ultimately have to be approved by the voters. Supervisor Corzo and I sit on the ad hoc committee. County Attorney Executive or County Attorney, do you want to speak about what's before us today?
Thank you. I just want to make sure that Supervisor Corzo didn't have any comments she wanted to offer before I jumped in.
Thank you. I just wanted to share briefly, I want to thank President Canepa for serving on this subcommittee with me. I'm really excited about this process and I'm grateful to our previous Board of Supervisors and to the authors of the charter for writing in the need to review the charter every eight years because it is important that we keep up with the times. And I want to point out that the last time that this charter review process was conducted, there weren't any recommendations for updating the charter. I imagine we're in different times now. So I think it's a really important opportunity for the community to have a voice in our charter. We know how important it is, and I'm excited for the conversation to begin. And this 15-member committee, based on what we are recommending, will be designed to reflect the county's diverse, diversity of geography, perspectives, and expertise to make sure recommendations are balanced and representatives of the needs of all who live and representative of the needs of all who live and work here. And the nominations will be coming back to the Board in January. It's a quick turnaround with the holidays so that we can meet the ideal timeline, and I understand that the CEO office has applications ready to go and open so folks can apply for their district appointment. And now I'd like to invite County Attorney Nivlin to share more details. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo, Supervisor Canepa. And as both Supervisors kind of reflected in their comments, Section 801 of the county charter does in fact require that every eight years, the Board of Supervisors convene a Charter Review Committee to, after public hearings, make appropriate recommendations for any amendments or revisions to the charter. And that's kind of where we find ourselves. And the charter has, as is known, been amended some number of times in the past, including, as I think Supervisor Canepa noted earlier in the meeting, to move us from essentially at-large elections to by-district elections. We, even the office of the County Attorney, is an office that was authorized through a charter amendment that was approved by the electorate. It used to be that the District Attorney provided civil legal support to the Board, and the Board, you know, after a charter review process, you know, moved for a process whereby a county council would be sort of appointed by the Board directly rather than through the District Attorney. And of course, even very recently, the electorate voted on Measure A, which was, again, an amendment to the charter, was outside of the eight-year cycle, which is also authorized. But in any event, my hope was to ask my colleague, Deputy County Attorney Brian Pettit, to come and speak briefly to the process that we anticipate, you know, in light of the work of the subcommittee, to form and configure the Charter Review Committee, and then also the process or the glide path that we anticipate with respect to the work of that committee and then ultimately what would happen thereafter. So, and again, this is just to present again the work that the subcommittee has done. But before that, I'm going to see if any Supervisors have any questions before we move to this presentation.
So the subcommittee put together the process, but is the subcommittee then going to be just automatically the two members who will be working on the committee? Or will the Board appoint two members to it?
Yeah, well, I think the work of the subcommittee will actually be done with the Board's action today. The subcommittee's job was to bring to you all a proposal with respect to the configuration of the Charter Review Committee and then the work as the glide path that we anticipate for the Charter Review Committee. So I don't anticipate, actually, that the subcommittee will have any further work to do. The work will then move to the Charter Review Committee itself. The Board Subcommittee's work is done. The Charter Review Committee will do its work and then bring its recommendations back to you all. The, as my colleague will know, staff will support the Charter Review Committee, staff from my office and from the County Executive's office, but there'll be no further work for the Charter Review Committee after today.
Okay. And then, well, I guess we'll find out in the presentation if there's going to be any Board members on that.
No, the short answer is no, there won't be.
So there's no Board members on the Charter Review Committee?
True.
And then at the end, so the last time there was this process, though, I think, I mean, I could be wrong, but I thought there were two Board members who were involved in some way during that process before it was brought back.
I don't, no? I don't believe that's the case. The Board wanted to, at some point, designate, you know, members to liaise, that's possible, but it was a staff-driven process from there.
All right, that's fine. I have no more questions at this time. I'll wait for the presentation.
Supervisor. Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I'm kind of concerned by the nature of who is going to be on this Charter Review Committee. going to be on this Charter Review Committee. It's not open-ended so that people can apply. It specifies various organizations. And I would like to see it be, at least a number of those slots, be open to people in general. I think, for instance, former civil grand jury members who have a great understanding of the county would be advantageous. We have a priority about children in this county, and yet there's no child-related organization outside, maybe you could say the School Board Association. But I mean, it's very, it's very constrained. And I don't know if this is something that we are just doing independently, that has this been done before?
Right.
In terms of the Charter?
Right.
Review Committee? And do we have discretion to expand it beyond these particular organizations?
Thank you, Supervisor. Yeah, to your point, the proposal before you contemplates a committee of 15 members. Now, and to be clear, five of those members would be members of the public who could apply. Each board member actually has the, under the system that we're anticipating here, each board member would have the prerogative to select a member to serve on the committee. Could be somebody who meets the criteria you're noting. And then, as you also noted, there are 10 different organizations who would nominate for your consideration or designate for your consideration, a member, including the Council of Cities, the School Boards Association, the League of Women Voters, et cetera. So the Commission on Aging, the Youth Commission, trying to, you know, I think that, and the other thing I'd note is that we, in putting this together and in working with the subcommittee, what we looked at was kind of what had been done historically. This is tracks, to an extent, the board's practice from the last go-around. There were a similar, you know, number of organizations that designated individuals for your consideration. I do believe that we made some changes. I think we identified an environmental group because of the concern the subcommittee had that it is important that an environmental group have a voice in all of this.
I guess my question to that point is why Green Foothills versus Sierra Club? Or why is it, I mean, I think we're-
That's the recommendation of the subcommittee. I mean, I believe it's within the prerogative of the board as a whole to designate a different committee if you thought it was appropriate. But that was, the role of the subcommittee was to do the best it could to try to identify appropriate stakeholders to participate in the process.
Can I ask, would the concern be addressed if instead of specific organizations, there was category?
I think categories would be more reflective of the community at large. This is very insular. These are people that are very-
So this way, if the Sierra Club wants a chance to compete for the seat against Foothills, they can?
Again, I would note that this is very consistent with the practice that was employed in the last go-around. Doesn't mean you're stuck with the process. And the other thing that, from a timing perspective, we just want to be clear on is that, you know, there is a need for us to move relatively expeditiously when Mr. Pettit gets a chance to present. He'll note that the glide path is aggressive. I mean, again, the notion is that at the end of the day, you'll get some recommendations. And those recommendations ultimately, if you decide you want to move forward with them, need to be voted on in November of 2026, is what we're anticipating. And while it sounds like that's a long ways away, and in some sense it is, given the way elections work and given the timelines that we would need to adhere to, the subcommittee needs to, I'm sorry, the committee, the Charter Review Committee needs to begin its work relatively promptly at the beginning of the year. So perhaps, perhaps we could have the opportunity to have Mr. Pettit provide his presentation and then we could deal with questions thereafter.
Mr. Pettit, why don't you move forward with your presentation?
Great. Good morning, Supervisors. Brian Pettit, Deputy County Attorney with the County Attorney's Office. And so as has already been stated, the organization and the structure of the proposed 2026 committee is similar to past practice, including what was done in 2018. In 2018, it was a 19-member board. Here, a 15-member board is recommended. The committee would comply with the requirements of the Brown Act. Eight members, so a bare majority would constitute a quorum. And, but an eight affirmative votes would be required to recommend an amendment to the charter, to your board. County Attorney's Office and the County Executive Offices will be supporting the committee. And in terms of the timeline, January 13th, your board will have an opportunity to approve the appointments of the members to the committee, get to identify any specific issues for the committee to consider. And also, there is an opportunity, under recent amendments to the Brown Act, to allow the committee members to meet by teleconference. Again, that's something that's within the discretion of your board. We anticipate that the committee would meet first, mid to late January, and then twice monthly after that through April. And then their report would come back to you at the beginning of May. And that's because we need to have an ordinance amendment to authorize any charter amendment to go on the ballot in November. That requires two readings, and so we do need some buffer time to put that in place if that's what the board wishes. So early May, the report would come back to your board and you'd have an opportunity to decide whether or not to put that charter amendment on the ballot in November. And that's what we anticipate. Oh, and I wanted to emphasize, these would be, I did mention, these are Brown Act meetings. They would be open to the public.
Great. Would you mind, just for the public and then for my colleagues, can you sort of outline the different positions within the committee, the 15 positions, so that the public knows that we've designated the subcommittee? Would you mind doing that?
Certainly. So there are 15 total members on the committee, is what's being recommended. Each board supervisor would select one member based on the application process. And then 10 additional members would be designated for your board's approval by 10 organizations within the community. So that's the council, the County Council of Cities, the County School Board Association, the League of Women Voters, the San Mateo County Central Labor Council, SAMCDA, the REACH Coalition, the Commission on Aging, the Youth Commission, Green Foothills Foundation, and the San Mateo County Coalition for Immigrant Rights.
Great. And just so I'm clear, we followed, you followed the practice of what we did in 2018. But we went from, I think the subcommittee, ad hoc committee, we went from 19 to 15, which I think is really important. The other thing that I'm encouraged about, sometimes, you know, people's attendance isn't the best. So I think having this teleconference ability is really gonna help us in participation. What I would say is, I'd say to some of my colleagues, I think narrowing the scope and currently what we have in place makes sense. What I would say is, if we were to go up to, I don't know, if we go 15, then we have to go up to 17 because we can't have an even number, correct?
We could have an even number. I mean, there's nothing in the law that says that you can't. I mean, you know, in some ways, having an odd number tends to suggest you won't get tie votes, which is something to be avoided, but, or sometimes preferred to be avoided. But there's nothing that would prevent you from doing that. The, you are correct in noting, however, that the number of members is smaller than it was in the past. I think the thought was that that might make for a maybe better attendance and more expeditious meetings.
Yeah, and I'm fine with what's before us today as is. But then I understand sort of my colleagues', you know, perspective. I think if we were to expand it in these different groups, it might be unclear, but maybe what we're able to do, and I don't know if Supervisor Spear is interested in this, is maybe what we're able to do is to look at if there's a, you know, a specific request for having a liaison with childcare or whatever it is. I'm open to that. But due to the time constraints, I think we have to move forward with taking action today just because we're really pushing up against this deadline. And that is, that is concern of me. But I think, again, what's before us today, I think Supervisor Corzo and I had, you know, worked on this. And I think we wanted to be very, very thoughtful in how we proceed. And I think we looked at it with a lens of inclusion, right? Really making sure that we include different groups, especially those groups in particular, you know, the environmental, having someone representative of the environment. But I think as we move forward, each supervisor has the ability to appoint who they want to appoint. But I do think that the selections before us are representative of San Mateo County. And I'm open to, you know, including an additional seat if someone is willing to put forth an organization. Yes, Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you. I wanted to add that this subcommittee had to work quickly and it was challenging at times to do so. But I do think that there is a need to also add a representative organization or another identified group for the LGBTQIA+ community, which we, which honestly, I'll say, was an oversight of mine as a liaison to the LGBTQIA+ Commission. So I do think, you know, this is a recommendation that we brought forward. The biggest significant change that we made from having a 19-member committee previously was that we went from having two appointed per district to five because the, a learning from the last committee eight years ago was that the group was too large. And so we went in that direction to address that concern and that learning. And so I do think, you know, I'm willing to have a discussion. But I do want to say that the larger this committee becomes, the more difficult it is for the work to get done on the timeline that it needs to get done. So, thank you.
So I have, I think we can make, I think we can take action today and also address Supervisor Spear's concerns and Supervisor Corzo's concerns. I do need help categorizing one of the entries because I also have a little bit of concern about pre-picking the organization. And so what I would say is, the categories do break down pretty well. You can see why each was picked. And a person from each one of those organizations obviously could apply and probably be being good stead with the board when they did. But there could, I think we should let other organizations. So what I would say is, the organizations could be a cities, an organization serving the needs of cities, an organization serving the needs of education, an organization serving the needs of labor, serving the needs of business, serving, an organization focused on building institutional equity. Then you have seniors, youth, environment, immigrant community, children, LGBTQIA. And the one I had difficulty was, was League of Women Voters. And I don't know how you, because it's such a broad serving organization, political, I don't know how you cat, is it voter rights? What is it? And I don't know how you would characterize that.
Well, there's two other areas that we're missing, and that's housing and health.
Well, and I, actually, I had wrote down healthcare. So we could take the League of Women Voters out and put in healthcare and housing, and then you get to 17. You get to that number. Actually, no, if we take out the League of Women Voters and we add two, we're, I think we're at an even number. So, but healthcare is right and housing is right, too. And so if we gave all those categories when we did the posting, people would just apply. I mean, those same organizations could apply when we did that posting.
Yes, Supervisor. I guess on some level, we'd have to exercise some judgment as to whether or not the people who are applying actually meet the criteria that you all are, whether or not this is truly somebody who represents the interest of voters' rights versus-
The board would have to weigh that in the appointment.
True enough, but then we need somebody to review the applications as well. I'm just sort of thinking through the timeframes and the fact that we're moving into the holiday season. Somebody will have to review the applications.
I think we would do that in a board meeting, though, right?
The timeline doesn't work, actually. So the reason why it's so specific is to make it so that these organizations can bring forward a nominee and then we can approve them quickly. If we make it a larger application process, we delay the creation and-
I don't understand that because each one of those organizations can go ahead when they apply and designate their nominee.
It is just unfortunate that we're up against this timeline at this, to, for this process.
It is true. Yes.
We shouldn't be at a process where we have to take a selection and not have an option.
We could come back next week, to be clear. We have one more meeting. And if there's work that you all want us to do, that you want the subcommittee to do with us, we can come back next week with some changes. Again, there are some logistical challenges, as I was sort of articulating, with respect to identifying categories. Well, people will apply and then ultimately you all will have to consider folks who are applying on the basis that they are affiliated with the interest of housing or health or education. Can be done. It just will require some time to sort through applications, assuming we get, you know, large numbers. But it can be done. Probably preferable not to try to rewrite this from the dais. I think it's, I think it's challenging and we run the risk of maybe not getting it quite right. So I would suggest that maybe if the board has that kind of direction for us, we will have to rework this item and bring it back to you on the ninth. And then we will frankly be up against it, kind of, and we'll have to take some action at that time. So, but we're certainly willing to do whatever the board wants to do with respect to how to rework this piece and bring it back. We did build in a little bit of additional time, recognizing we have a meeting on the ninth. But it's, in any event, the, you know, the constraints we've kind of offered to you all and we're prepared, though, within those constraints, to do whatever you'd like us to do.
Yeah, I mean, the thing about this, at least for me personally, is while I give great deference to these organizations, it feels weird to, it feels off to delegate our authority to the organization and then pick an individual. And frankly, if there is an organization that is less, well, much less known, but the individual has an outstanding resume, I might lean toward the person with the outstanding resume. So I'd be very interested in this process.
I would, I would support that. We want to be inclusionary, not exclusionary. And I think by confining it like this, we are creating that environment. So I would support postponing it for a week.
Okay. Thanks, Supervisor. And Mr. President, I just want to make sure that insofar as we're gonna bring it back, we have very clear direction from you all in terms of how you'd like it, what kind of work you'd like done.
I have a few questions. I have questions on the application process. Do we know what that's gonna look like if you're sending applications out? I heard you mention the application process.
Yes, the application is being developed quite literally as we speak, and it'll be ready to go once the board takes action to create the committee.
I think the idea is we would post it on the county website. We do have a county website for boards and commissions. And I think the notion was both a press release and a, and an application that could be accessed from the county website. So I don't know that there was any notion of doing a mass mailing. That wasn't the idea. I think the idea, again, was a press release with directing folks to the county websites that they can apply from there.
What criteria will the board use to select individuals? What are we looking for? What's the ideal person for this committee? What are we, what kind of skill set are we looking for?
I think I'm gonna go ahead and take that one as well. I think the idea was that each board member was going to, for the board member's own purposes, decide, for the purposes of the selectee from their district, was going to decide what the appropriate criteria were. The way things were structured initially, we hadn't really wrestled with that question because the way things were structured in the first instance was each board member was going to appoint one member and make the decision as to the criteria that that board member wanted to apply in analyzing the applications. And then, the way things are currently structured, we were deferring, as has been noted, we were deferring to the organizations themselves to designate an individual for the board's consideration. So recognizing that we were going to have those organizations decide who was the appropriate representation for the, for purposes of the Charter Review Committee.
But if you have a specific timeline, you do want a certain skill set of individuals at the table as well.
That is true. That is true.
So that's what I was looking for.
Right.
If you've given that some thought of what-
Well, I think certainly the kinds of things, insofar as we're being asked for, are recommendations on that. People who have a good understanding of county government, people who have a good understanding, broadly speaking, of what the charter is, or an ability to grasp what the charter is, what it does, why it's important, somebody who has a good understanding of the needs of the county writ large. So it matters like that would be the kinds of things that we, you know, I think would believe were important in all of this. But we had, you know, but expected to defer to the members of the board of supervisors and to the organizations themselves.
Thank you. And then finally, once we come back to have a clear understanding of the- And then finally, once we come back to have a clear understanding of the timeline, how much time or, you know, should this committee commit to? So they'll have a better understand, understanding of meeting length and...
Great question. Yeah, I'm going to ask Mr. Pettit to talk about, you know, what would the workload likely be for, for committee members?
So, so we anticipate the board will make the appointments at its January 13th meeting. And the first committee meeting will, will take place hopefully in short order after the appointments. So mid to late January would be the first meeting. Again, we have forecasted the backend date that the, that your board would be receiving recommendations, May 5th of 2026. So the expectation is that the committee would be meeting in between those two dates. We're expecting twice monthly meetings. So that would be one at the end of January and then two in February, March, and April for a total of, of eight meetings of the committee. Or, excuse me, I can do my math, seven meetings of the committee.
And the length of the meeting? I mean, if somebody, if I was to go to someone, are they meeting two hours, three hours? What's the length of a meeting typically?
I, I don't think that we have a sense. I mean, it, it could vary depending on what's on the agenda for that day. I think the early meetings will just be getting the committee in order and identifying what issues it will be looking at on its sort of own initiative. And so I think it, it really could vary just depending on, on the interest of the committee in, in different issues.
Thank you.
So, so when we did the, the charter, you know, we had something similar in 2018. It just, you know, memory, the reason we moved forward, like with the legal women voters and these other organizations, is because the county had an existing relationship. They were, they were our trusted partners and they brought from different areas, you know, expertise and knowledge. We've had a, I guess you could say partnership, working, working relationship with them. You know, I really have grave concern on, on the timeline. You know, this is happening real fast. I'm not against moving forward with, with continuing the item, but what I am worried about is that we're not going to be able to meet our obligations in terms of putting together this committee. I guess through the, through the county attorney, I'd like to understand in, in greater depth what the exact timeline is. I know we have a week, but if we move past that week, what then happens?
What would happen, Supervisor, is that we would be absent, having some special meetings, you know, during December to actually take, to take some form of action prior to January. I think we'd find ourselves in a place where we would be, you know, sort of taking time from that, from the charter review committee itself to do its work. We would have to be, again, forcing the charter committee, charter review committee to do its work in a more compressed period of time because the things that we can't compromise on are the, you know, the amount of time we need to adopt an ordinance that requires two readings, as has been noted, the fact that we have to have all that done 88 days prior to the general election in November. So, so the May date, I think, is, is pretty tight. And so we would just require that committee to do more work in less time. A thought that was occurring to me as I was sitting here was the proposition that if we were comfortable with the notion of a 15-member committee, I mean, another possibility, which would allow the board, I think, a lot more kind of discretion and flexibility with respect to how they end up with folks on a committee, would be the possibility each board member just appoints three members. And then the board members themselves can, again, decide for themselves the kinds of representation they would like to, to see on the committee. And that would, again, allow an opportunity for the board, again, to decide for itself the, you know, what, what's, what's important with respect to who's on this committee.
Supervisor Corzo?
Thank you. So I appreciate the, the recognition that the board is interested and recognizes how important this process is. I'm concerned about Brown Act and how we, how would we know that someone else didn't appoint someone to the category, to the same category? So I just think logistically that wouldn't work. But I want to take a moment to read the, the, the 2018 Charter Review Committee representatives and categories, just to give that context. So again, previously there were two representatives from each district, so that's 10 folks already. Someone representing communities of concern, someone representing, representing council of cities, someone representing large businesses, someone representing, representing League of Women Voters, representing Sampson City, representing San Mateo County Labor Council, representing San Mateo County School Boards Association, representing senior citizens and representing youth commission. So I think maybe it would be helpful if we can agree at this point on which of these we are okay with. And then we can just focus on what categories are left that we could debate. And I think it'd be probably the best use of our time to make that clear today so that in a week from now, we can have all of that really set in stone and ready for our approval. When I learned about this, I, I, as all, the rest of the board is right now, I was really in awe of how important this committee could be. And, and I think we're all feeling that right now, which is a good thing. I also, just for, to be quite honest and transparent, you know, as being part of the subcommittee, I, I was hoping we could bring it, we could have brought this to the board sooner. That unfortunately didn't happen just because of other folks' availability, et cetera. But the subcommittee was made up of the president and the vice president. I think for a future subcommittee to just get more updates on this, I think it would make sense to, to have a similar structure, president, vice president, or whatever our board, you know, agrees on. But just for right now, I would propose, again, that we get clear on which we have no issues with in terms of being specific and, and, and be mindful of if we create a really complicated application process that will delay things because of scheduling, because of our own availability, et cetera. So I'm going to propose that we look at the categories before us and just kind of agree whether we want to be more broad or not. Does that make sense?
Before we do that, you know, I want to get consensus from the board. I think there, there are two members. Just curious to where Supervisor Gochet, what are your, your thoughts on where we should move direction-wise?
As far as next steps?
Next steps.
I think we, we, as a county, we know the nonprofits that we work with. So if we put them in categories, it shouldn't be that difficult to look and see who's qualified in those categories. So if council of cities is the only individual that's doing council of cities work, that's who we work with. So I, I'm agreeing, I just don't want it to be, we've identified these groups only and those are the only groups we're going to meet with. So if we're going to go through it and have a better understanding of where there's some competition, let's figure that out.
Okay. Let me take, let me take public comment right now.
Sure, Mr. President. I haven't received any speaker slips from chambers, so I'll take comments now from Zoom. We do have four hands raised. Would you like me to make a final call now or after the first speaker? I'll take...
Final call right now.
Okay. Final call as of now, please. So raise your hand if you'd like to comment on this item.
Thirty-second timer.
Item eight. Final call has been made. So our final four speakers, Sabrina, Michelle Stevens, Catherine Carter, and David Crafts. You will each have 30 seconds. Sabrina, please unmute and begin.
I come as one of the people suing juris. The US Constitution is the supreme law of the land. Can you show where in the Constitution where a charter, Brown Act, Home Rule override the Constitution and the rights of the people? Article 2, Section 1, California Constitution, it is expressly written, "We, the people, have the right to alter or reform government when the public would require it. And since the board is in malfeasance by violating the First Amendment and Article 1, Section 3 of the Constitution, both for right of grievance, it is my wish and demand this board and charter be dissolved immediately." Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Stevens, please unmute and begin.
Hello, I come to you as one of the people. I have a question and I hope that you all will answer it for me and not just gloss over it. My question is, you know, human trafficking is a big thing. I think everybody, you know, has a heart for that. My question is, with these people coming over, especially the children, having different colored bands on their wrist, where did they go? Which NGO took them? And why are every...
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker, Catherine Carter, please unmute and begin.
Catherine Carter is suing juris, one of the people. The people form the charters. The charters come from the people because the government is based on the people. They are the people and their posterity, the basis and foundation of government. How is it you have, out of 15 people, only five on that committee are actually going to be represented as one of the people? Doesn't make sense. Who do you serve? The people or the, or your NGOs?
Thank you.
Thank you. David Crafts, please unmute and begin.
Good morning. My name is David Crafts. I live in Redwood City and also serve an LGBTQIA+ Commission. And I, I came to chat about the inclusion of LGBTQI-plus identified person to serve on this committee and want to thank you for, for bringing that up and would really encourage you to continue to make sure that we have representation from my community on that committee. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you very much. Through the, through county council, I think what we're going to do is continue the item. And then, do you have enough direction from the board?
Well, let me repeat back what I think I understand, Mr. President. I think what I'm understanding is that in lieu of identifying specific organizations, the, the notion is for us to try to identify the particular constituency that would be sort of identified by that organization. For example, organizations serving the needs of businesses, organizations serving the needs of educators, organizations serving the needs of those concerned about the environment, immigrants, et cetera. And, and bring that back and hopefully give some thought to how it is that we'll deal with sort of the, the, the mechanics of an application process in the, in the time that's, that's allotted. That's my understanding of what the board would, or at least the consensus of what the board is interested in.
Great. With that, can I, can I get a motion to continue this item to the next meeting?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo is absent. Supervisor Mueller? Oh.
Supervisor Corzo's here.
Supervisor Corzo, there's a motion to continue the item.
I'm going to vote no, just because I do think that there are a couple things that we can get clear before we postpone the item. Sorry.
No problem.
I ran back because I was like, no. So for example, well, I know we're in the middle of a vote. Can, can we?
Sure. Your's yours, go ahead.
Thank you. So for example, I heard from Supervisor Gochet that, for example, council of cities, like if we're all okay with that one, maybe we can just get clear on which ones we're okay with versus which ones we want to make categorize so that we are not leaving everything on the table for looking differently next time. So for example, like, are we okay with 15 members?
We are, we are in the middle of a vote, Mr. President.
I'm going to, we're going to...
Why, I don't understand what you're upset about.
Hold on one sec. We'll finish. Go ahead, go ahead. Supervisor Corzo.
So I do think that we could make the work easier for staff by just being more clear on which ones are, like, for example, is it Green Hill, Green Hill's Foundation the concern? Are we okay with the youth commission versus are we okay with the youth commission? So I, I would propose that, just so we're able to stay on the timeline. If there's not a will for that, that's totally fine.
Okay. If we can conclude with the roll call?
Sure. Supervisor Mueller? Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes to continue.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll now move to our last and, and final item. Item nine is a resolution directing the county executive officer to establish a contracting policy for county awarded security services contracts. This item is sponsored by Supervisor Gochet and myself. Today Supervisor Gochet and I are bringing forward a resolution to establish a contracting policy for county awarded security and service contracts. This item builds on our board's longstanding commitment to ensuring that the people who keep our facilities, our employees, and our community members safe are treated with dignity, compensated fairly, and provided with the basic protections every worker deserves. Security officers play a critical role in our public infrastructure, often behind the scenes, often without recognition, but their work is essential to the day-to-day functions of our county government, the safety of our residents. We also know from both national studies and what we've heard directly from workers that this industry faces persistent challenges, low wages, misclassification, wage theft, inadequate training, and high turnover. At the same time, the research is clear, fair labor standards, responsible contracting produce better outcomes for workers, for the county, and for the public. When contractors follow the rules and invest in their workforce, services are more consistent, more stable, and higher quality. That is exactly what our residents expect and deserve. The policy we're proposing today mirrors the responsible contracting framework this board previously adopted for janitorial services. It sets clear expectations for contractors, strengthens worker protections, ensures that county funds are used responsibly and in alignment with our values. This is about raising standards, improving accountability, and making sure our contracts reflect the best practices we already expect in other sectors. I also want to take a moment to recognize and thank Sanjay Garla, First Vice President of SEIU, USWW, and the entire USWW team. Their persistent advocacy, their partnership, and their unwavering commitment to lifting up frontline workers have been instrumental in bringing this issue forward. Thank you. Sanjay and USWW have consistently fought to ensure that workers across our county have a fair shot at economic stability and safe working conditions. Their leadership has made our community stronger and we deeply appreciate the work they do. With that, Supervisor Gochet, would you like to make some comments?
Yes, thank you Supervisor Canepa. Security at, at all government offices have never been more important than right now. In this moment, due to the deep political divide that exists in this country, security guards play an important role in keeping us at, at the county safe. And it is important that we do right by our contracted security guards as well. According to the Bureau of Labor statistics, there are over 1 million security guards working nationally. With the medium annual wage for security guards nationally is $18.46 per hour. That's $38,398 per year. And we heard earlier that a house can cost $4,000 a month. In the Bay Area, that is, that is absolutely unsustainable. And the average educational level for a security guard is a high school diploma. The county needs to do well by those who keep our buildings, our county employees secure, and I think ensuring that the guards have access to fair wages and fair benefits through collective bargaining is a key way to do this. We've seen that a policy like this can be effective with our janitorial workers, and I look forward to seeing those protections extended to our security workers as well. And I'm back to you.
Thank you very much for those comments Supervisor Gochet. Are there any comments from our colleagues? Supervisor Spear?
Just very briefly, I, I think we know that the livable wage in San Mateo County is something like $33 an hour. We have been pretty consistent in making sure all county employees make that at least. The question becomes those who contract with the county. And I think you're raising the issue relative to janitors. It probably should also be reflective of all contracts that are contract, all contracts that the county has, that those that are providing the services are making a livable wage. So we might want to look at that in the future.
Great. Through the, through the county executive, can we do that? And then report back to the board?
We can.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments? Do we have public comment?
Yes, Mr. President, we do have three speaker cards from chambers and then we'll take comments from Zoom. Gabriel Gonzalez, followed by Karina Martinez. And, Mr. President, would you like the timer to stay?
We'll do a minute.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Karina Martinez and I work as a security officer at Allied in Menlo Park. I'm here because any responsible security contract should and would include CBA standard requirements for healthcare wages and job security. As of right now, we as officers, we don't have the security to believe that when we, when a contract shifts or conducts jobs cuts that we will be secure. We don't understand if we are going to have livable wages or healthcare or even employment to protect not even just ourselves but our families as well. It makes it harder for us as officers to want to continue to be on those front lines for these contracts when, for our county when they're protecting themselves and their companies from us rather than with and for us. CBAs outline reliable and concise benchmarks for what fair and efficient wages and benefits look like. With contracts being held with these standards, us workers would feel safe and feel more secure and better knowing that we are having a livable and steady wage and promote our growth for not even just ourselves but our families as well. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Gabriel Gonzalez, followed by Luis Gallegos.
Gabriel had to leave, so I'm speaking on his behalf. Is that okay?
What, can you please state your name?
Yes, Clara McGilly.
Okay, go ahead Clara.
Hello, I'm here speaking on behalf of Gabriel. He was here to speak and just had to go to work 10 minutes ago. He's a security officer for San Mateo County, works at one of the clinics. And he was going to share with you how he became a security officer to protect his community and make sure that people can access healthcare safely. He also wanted to share the risks and dangers he faces daily on the job, including de-escalating violent situations, handling people in crisis, and being threatened on the job as part of being a frontline worker. Security officers deserve respect on the job, fair wages, healthcare, and job security. So I ask for your support on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, Luis Gallegos.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Luis Enriquez. Oh, Luis Enriquez, sorry, I got a long name. I work with Allied Universal at Meta. And I'm here because any responsible security contract needs to include a CBA standard requirement for healthcare and wages. CBAs already outline clear benchmarks for what's fair, reliable, and what it looks like. If contractors are held to those standards, workers know that they'll be safe, they'll be secure and have affordable health, healthcare, and steady wage growth regardless of who wins the contract. Right now, many officers don't have that security. By setting CBA level requirements, it would give workers the stability we need to focus on our work and continue to provide safe and consistent coverage for the county. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. And now we can take comments by Zoom.
Please give them a minute.
Great. We have three hands raised, Mr. President, and I can take a final call at this time. Those on Zoom, please go ahead and raise your hand as this is a final call for this item. We are on item nine. Final call made. Three speakers, Michelle Stevens, Sabrina, and Bruce. Michelle, please unmute and begin.
Hello. I just, I want to make the statement that I, I really asked an honest question and you all just blew me off. You know, so are you here for the people? Or are you just here to control what you want to say and what you want to hear? You know, I asked a question. These NGOs were taking children that had colored bands. What did that mean? Where did those children go? Which NGO had what color? You all want to stop human trafficking, but to me, you're willing to participate in it by letting these NGOs show up, take children, write their names down, put them within our nation, and then want to deem them abandoned? You know, I don't care if grandma lived in a grass hut. That's grandma. Children need their families. And I do appreciate if you would just please give me an answer.
Thank you.
Okay. Next we have Sabrina. Please unmute and begin.
I come as one of the people suing jurors. Livable wages are not a constitutional right, however slavery is. In Article 1, Section 6, the California Constitution states slavery is involuntary.
Can we focus on, can we focus on the, the contract, not the, the resolution before us? Go ahead.
That is. I'm talking about livable wages. I reclaim my time. The, the, the states, livable wages are not a constitutional right. And that was mentioned in the speaker's comments. Involuntary superduty is also prohibited with step for punishment of crime. The state is billions of dollars in debt and the union are tied into the pensions, which is purrs and stirs. If they go for that, they're not going to have anything. It is a trillion dollars of debt. So how are you going to sustain their pensions and these livable wages that you are trying to pass through right now? Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker, Bruce, please unmute and begin.
Yes, I was just wondering if you could clarify what your objective here is on what you're trying to pass this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment, Mr. President.
Great. Thank you very, very much. Supervisor Gochet, you want to make the motion?
I make a motion that we authorize a resolution authorizing the county executive to establish a contracting policy for county awarded security services, service contracts.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Gochet?
Yes.
And President Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. We're now at the end of the regular agenda. County Attorney Nivlin, before we go into closed session, will there be any report out?
No, there's no report out today.
All right. I want to thank everyone with that. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. The time is now 11:58 a.m. and the meeting is adjourned to closed session.